Okay, it's six o'clock, December tenth, two thousand nineteen. I call to order the City of Kennedy's regular scheduled city council meeting. A foremost President, Amanda, with your please vote a roll.
Counselor Breonis?
President.
Counselor Witt?
President.
Counselor Sinek?
President.
Counselor Condon?
Here.
Counselor Meyer?
Here.
All in person.
Counselor Wynn, would you say the prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for watching over us in this day, thanking you for all that you do with this world and this country. Asking you to be with us today, help us make good, sound decisions for the growth of our community. Help us to be able to understand each other, listen to each other, and find the growth in whatever it is we need to do. To Lord, we ask that you give us all an extra dose of kindness for this season. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Um, Richard Salsager.
Richard Salsager. Good evening to everybody, uh, city manager, city attorneys, secretaries, and council members. Thank God for y'all for here. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, just in case. We got Christmas coming up, so just, uh, everything's gonna be nice. Since the last time I was here in a meeting, Mr. Manager and council members, uh, there was some topics, important topics, like always, that were discussed, and one of them, or a couple of them were, and I wanna remind myself as far as what I mentioned. Um, I think we're all guilty of it. Uh, we never know when something's gonna change all of a sudden, 'cause it will change. And I also mentioned that if we wanna get away with something, we all try to do everything possible to get away with it. If I may, uh, city manager, can I, uh, can I show a photo out of my, out of my phone? Can I pass it around? It's, 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 it's a, it's a nice photo, it's nothing.
If it's, yeah.
It's, it's, I just, I was in the Valley over the weekend, and I just wanna, just to go out and recognize a gentleman with the, with the cowboy hat there. I'll mention his name here in a minute. Which one are we looking at? The gentleman with the cowboy hat. Not the ugly one in the middle, not the fat one, but the cowboy hat. Some of y'all might recognize him, some of y'all not. Anyway, just real quick, um, that gentleman's name is Mr. Terry Snyder. I didn't think I'd see him, but I was at a wedding at the, at the Valley, and he's a Texas Ranger. And that's why I brought up the fact, uh, this is the deal of, uh, you never know when something's gonna change. Just with that said, I'll, I'll talk about that later on, uh, the next meeting or so. He's a very important person in the state of Texas. I'd like to ask the council if, if we're ready, or have we decided, or how long, much longer, what, are we gonna hire or win a permanent city administrator?
You can't ask questions that the council doesn't have to respond, but they, you're listening to what you're saying, so.
Okay. I just thought maybe we had the right to find out, or?
Well, you could, you can make that an opinion.
Okay.
But the council decides.
Oh, well, okay. I'm sorry.
That's right.
So anyway, um, we have these signs that were put out, just real quick, I don't have much time on this, you know, but there was some signs put out. That's it? I'm done?
You guys just didn't answer the new, why did you go on?
Okay. Uh, yeah, just real quick, I know there's, there's more important people here that need to talk about this. Uh, they were, they were put out in different areas, different neighborhoods, speed limit signs. And the reason why I'm talking about this, 'cause yesterday and before, the last night of the four-day meeting, uh, there was a great concern about safety at the park that's fixing to open up up here. Where I live, I think we have the wrong signs, in my opinion, and, uh, there was a couple of ladies that brought it to my attention, just that live in the same area, that I, that I think are important. I'm not important, they are. Um, there's a sign on our four-way section by going to our school. It says no trucks are allowed. Uh, we do have a truck route. But I think what, what the problem is, and it, it might be funny, it might be, I don't know, but, uh, the sign that's there, it says no trucks allowed, it's got a cookie truck delivery sign picture, not an eighteen wheeler picture. Um, when that park opens up, it's gonna be some problems. Because where I live, we need to put clock signs for tines, not for speed limit signs. We need to put a clock on, uh, maybe a quarter-mile distance, so we can stop this Indianapolis five-hundred racetrack that we got down to where I live. Um, seriously, somebody's gonna get killed. Exiting out of there and entering that park, whatever, it's, 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 it's dangerous right now, so I can just imagine what it's gonna be later. We, we need to really, I think, I don't know, maybe with our chief and police department patrol, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's pretty bad down there. Seriously. Whoever decided with the signs, if it's helping somewhere else, but it's not helping there. Um, really, right now, as far as with the opening comments, I think that's all I have to say for now. Thank God. Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Did anyone else wanna speak on the public comments that didn't have the opportunity to sign up?
I don't know if I got the right. Somebody told me out there that I could speak before anything started. It's about East Main, you know what we're talking about, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But it's just gonna be about, I heard that they were just gonna take bids on East Main Road. Is that what it's about? And I, like, I heard it's gonna, they're gonna be speaking on East Main. So I just wanted to know about the sewer, about the street, what exactly is it gonna be about?
And they'll talk about that during the discussion item, but again, you can't ask them questions, but you could tell them what you wanna to tell them, or inform them, or, or what your concern is.
Okay. Uh, to me, the sewer on East Main Street doesn't look like it's working out, to me.
The drainage.
And the drainage, the sewer, they're almost finished. They're talking about going to paving, and I don't know how much more they need on the drainage sort of finish. And it just doesn't look like it's gonna work out, in my opinion. So when can I come in? When are they gonna finish? When are they gonna stop making those pictures, like you said? But that's what my concern is about.
Okay. We're gonna discuss item number ten. If, if you'd like to speak on it again then, here in a few minutes?
Okay.
The city secretary, you'll put your name, and you'll be able to address that again in a minute.
What was it, sure?
That's it then.
Alright.
Anyone else?
Um, I see you. Yes, I'll call you on whatever. Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak on their citizen comments? No? Okay, moving on. Item number six, consider an act on the consent agenda. Anyone?
Make the most of it. Put out item K and item M.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Go ahead, Brandon.
I don't care if police report, it's chief. Chief, do, um, we understand trucks are going down neighborhoods that aren't supposed to, I've found that complaint as well. Is there any way that we can get more patrolling throughout the town? What, what is the agenda that y'all officers have that these trucks are going through without being caught at those times?
Do you know where? Is it bigger street?
I've seen them go down School Street, I've seen them go, um, down back there on Comanche Street. As a matter of fact, they're trying to make a U-turn. I guess they get lost.
Okay.
And I just wanna know, do we have?
I can, I'll definitely pass it on.
Plan to get this, get them stopping going out of neighborhoods? I understand they get lost, but we have to solve the truck route.
Was, yes, some of, if they're making deliveries, then they're allowed, they're authorized to be there, and so you have to determine if they're making a delivery or not. Yes, so, I, I will definitely check on it.
Another, another question was with the, uh, those signs, uh, those digital signs that are picking up the speed. Do we have a certain amount of time that they're gonna be in certain places, and then do we move them? Do we have a map for where the next place is gonna be put?
Yes, so I think it's in your, in my, I think I put a note in my report there. Our current plan is to leave them in place for approximately a month, and then move to different locations. That gives me a pretty good, it gives me a digital readout of, uh, it gives me all kinds of speeds, the average speeds, all those kind of things, so it would give us a better, a better look. So, it does take a little bit, you have to unscrew them and move and re-screw them, so it takes a little bit of work, but, uh, I have the next two or three locations mapped out, but if you have suggestions, where you'd like them, just let me know.
Speaking, speaking on that really quickly, um, 'cause I know one is on North Fifth. Um, is there any attachment? 'Cause I've seen them before where they have, like, the red and blue lights on them, when you peek over that speed limit, is that possibly something?
I can check. It, right now, it'll flash at you.
Well, I, I see that it flashes. I've just seen the other ones, and I don't know if they're any better, or if they would be more effective, but if the speed limit's thirty-five, you're going thirty-seven, it flashes those lights, I guess it'd be cutting. Would it?
I'll check, see if there's attachment. I don't remember seeing that, but I can look for it.
So when you take them down and move them, that's when you can pull the data off them, or?
Well, actually, it's, uh, Bluetooth, so I literally pull them, I take that truck from my laptop that I can, uh, download right to it. Yeah, it's really pretty, pretty simple after that.
With that data that you collect off the report, is that how y'all determine, put an officer here to do traffic monitoring?
Yes, it, it allows us to have a better handle on where's, majority, a lot of the times when people say, oh, they're speeding on my, people are speeding on the street, people are speeding, it's really hard to tell them that, you know, if they are or they're not. This'll give us actual numbers. And what you find, a majority, like, uh, the one that was on South Street?
Yes.
Or North Street, um, that's a thirty-five mile an hour zone, ninety percent of people were under that, and just, you know, really, it was a very small number that were over it, so. And you're, you're gonna kinda see that, but it gives me a better idea when citizens ask me about their neighborhood, I can give them a real number as to what really is.
It's like on Escondido, speed limit right there, when that sign was there, was forty-five?
Yeah.
It'll start flashing, you have forty.
Yeah, we had it set, it, the way it's set, it only has a certain number of options, so. It was set a little under.
Okay.
But it does give you a number, an actual percentage of speeds, so.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay? Thanks, sir. Jim?
Waste water report. Do we have anybody from the city here?
No, we're not here.
Okay, there's been several reports I've gotten from people that, here that live on May, Maytag, the Witt area, they're waking up morning after morning without water. Is there a reason, or we haven't that many of these expected, that the water's not?
And we, they, they found a major leak over in Witt today, and that was causing the low water pressure, uh, and hopefully get that fixed, but it right now. We'll see, they're gonna monitor that over the next few days.
In the last few mornings prior to that, they've been waking up without the water. Do we have those more leaks by, beyond that one as well?
Yeah.
We're, we're seeing more leaks going on back there, so. Do we have a solution? Do we try to stay ahead of that?
What are we gonna do about it? Are we trying to do something?
Yeah, we're looking to replace him, about a hundred feet of old cast iron pipe that was given out on this, so they're getting some fresh quotes on that, depending on what that costs us.
Do you know how long that's gonna take?
Uh, hopefully have the quotes the next day or two, and we should be able to move forward on that pretty quick.
Anything else on that? Is there any other item we'd like to discuss on the con, uh, consent agenda? If not, uh, let's have a motion.
Got it. Got them raised?
Yes, it's number six.
Oh, still on six, huh?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion if we, if we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
There's no other discussion, please call up.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Witt?
Yes.
Counselor Sinek?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution number nineteen dash twenty-five, resolution of the city council of the City of Kennedy, Texas, expressing, expressing official intent to reimburse with tax-exempt obligation proceed cost for the twenty-twenty Kennedy Carrizo water supply project. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. Um, this is the reimbursement ordinance that we discussed, um, before, that will allow us, if this is passed, that you're, this will allow us then to use some of our current funds to get this project moving until the bonds are sold, and then we'll pay back our reserves out of the bonds. Uh, Mr. Strudgen is here tonight, and he, uh, he has a bond, uh, how this resolution works, and what it allows us to do, and that's the answer.
Just very briefly, I couldn't do any better than it did. I mean, this is just a federal tax law requirement that gives you the opportunity to essentially reimburse yourself for money that you have, and you can look back sixty days from here, and this, this sort of sets in time, the ability to pay yourself back. Otherwise, you lose the opportunity to, um, to do so once you finally issue bond, you reimbursed for this obligation.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for anyone else?
And this is just not to exceed ten million, correct?
That's perfect. This gets us through the initial phase of acquiring the land and, and, sort of, engineering, survey, and, and with its second issue, we understand more about what the actual cause would be, in terms of, 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 so.
And we're given about six months? Or is that the time?
We have, you know, we have six months to finish all of that, and sign, um, the final progress agreement.
So we got, what, left five and a half months straight up?
Kind of. Nine months, back to two, less than ten days. It's been about ten days since we looked at, if we noticed that they had everything in place.
Anything else on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve agenda item number seven.
I'll second that.
If there's no other discussion, please call up.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Witt?
Yes.
Counselor Sinek?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of possible, thank you, Tom. Consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance nineteen thirteen, and ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending ordinance eighteen sixteen relating to fees assessed for solid waste collection and disposal service, establishing fees to become effective January first, twenty twenty, providing for collection of delinquent payment containing a savings clause, and repealing all ordinances in conflict here with. Is there a presentation?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Salsager?
Oh, sorry. My apologies for earlier, but, uh, I was, uh, talking to the waste article, report. Uh, the, um, the waste collection on disposal, um, before Thanksgiving, I think, if I'm correcting, if I'm wrong, there was, uh, something mentioned in the paper, I believe, that as of that Monday of, uh, last week, I believe, 'cause I went to the Valley Friday, so that Monday was supposed to be the start of, uh, disposal collection Mondays and Thursdays. I think usually it's been Mondays through Friday, different areas of the town, uh, and of course, sometimes anything can happen, but my question is, and you don't have to answer, but I just, of course, I was already told that, but, if we go pay our water bill, and it's charging us, uh, three eighty or two eighty, whatever it is for the, the disposal collection, uh, if it doesn't get picked up, and I just noticed it after twenty years that I lived there, in that area, off of North Fifth, that, I was like, well, you know, 'cause somebody asked me about it at Walmart, like, just another individual that's more important than me, that if my trash got picked up, I said, no, I just put my trash back, my trash came back. But they said, well, they said Monday and Thursday, it wasn't getting picked up. I said, well, go to city hall, or ask somebody. I'm not, like I said, I ain't nobody important. But, uh, we do have somebody that represents our section, and I can, I can say, or, or anybody in the City of Kennedy, if your trash does not get picked up, you might have it piled up, uh, overflowing, or whatever, some people do, some people don't, just, I mean, that's y'all's business, we're prerogative on that. You go pay your water bill, and you, if you ask them, uh, why is there need to pay for my disposal, not being picked up, my trash, we still get charged. It's just the way it is. And I think it adds up. I think it does. Two dollars, two dollars and eighty cents, like, people say, oh, it's no big deal, or no, but it is a big deal, because we're paying the people, or the responsible people, the, the, the company, whatever, to take care of that. So we're not gonna get reimbursed, and I think it's wrong.
The way they make their money.
Yeah, I think it's wrong. I'm just saying, I think it is wrong. But, uh, you have to pay them, but, I mean, there's, there's, there's ways of, uh, maybe working it out or what, but it adds up. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, and I'm done, I'm talking only as far as for the citizens of Kennedy. You know what I mean? It's just not, uh, I don't think it's right. Because if you don't care, or anybody that's representing us, not just your precinct, not just your district, but we're, you're representing the whole, the whole, the whole area as far as Kennedy's concerned, uh, I would think, and I hope that something can get done about that. Um, like I said, it was mentioned in the paper that that's what was gonna be done, and, now, that means bring your trash out, get it ready, 'cause then now you're gonna miss out on it, but you don't miss out on it, it just didn't come pick it up, but you're still getting charged for it. And I think that's just not right. Thank you. Is there a presentation? Is there, I'm sorry, is there anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Um, per our contract with Waste Connections, Moonstar Inc., they are allowing a CPI adjustment on a yearly, annual basis. This will put that adjustment into place, uh, it figures to twenty-eight cents per month for each residential customer. Uh, the transfer from Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, to only Monday, Thursday, has had a few hiccups in it, uh, and when we hear about those, we call, and they've been very responsive, about coming back immediately, and another truck catch-up, pick up what they missed. So hopefully they're getting the bugs out of doubt, but this twenty-eight cents a month is allowed by their contract, and we recommend that it be.
I, I did have a question about that, 'cause I, I receive, or I get trash services on Mondays and Thursdays. Now, I didn't receive the notice in the mail, was it because I currently already get the services on Mondays and Thursdays? Or how did they decide how to send that out? 'Cause I myself, there was a surprise, when I found on social media, and people were like, when did this happen?
Mr. Harris here, I'll refer that to him.
I may ask, I could ask that. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening, staff. My name's Jim Hare, I'm the District Municipal Marketing Manager for Waste Connections, and some of the issues that are coming about, to answer your, your question, Justin, is the fact that the message went out to all addresses that we have on file accounts that we have set up on individual addresses, so those were sent on the address list that we have on, on, on file, on files in the account. If we missed anybody, it's just simply because we didn't have that account on file, as far as individual, individual address. In a routing, in a routing system, we've got the street address, we route according to what those streets are, according, so if you missed that, it's simply because we did not have that address in our, in our system. And, and, and we're gonna have a few of those, I don't know if you're on the outer?
I, I actually live right north of the street.
North Fifth Street.
Right, up the road.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know how I got missed, but I know there, on social media, there was a lot of people saying that they weren't aware of it, they ain't gonna notice, so I didn't know, because I already received services on Monday and Thursday, that's why I didn't get them.
The mail-out was to go to all residents that we had, uh, an address on, and, and kind of explain the Monday, Thursday, reason we did that, we used to service Monday, Tuesday through Friday, we'd have one truck in here each day. Now we have four trucks, three to four trucks on, on Monday, and three to four trucks on, on Thursday. That way, that we, we have, we're picking up everybody on that first service day. If we happen to have a track, truck down, or something happens with one of our employees, or something that doesn't show up, we still have trucks running in the city to continue to pick up and make up the ground for that truck that's broke down. We also are running every truck that we have from our Sagin operation, running south, we run every one of our trucks, all fourteen routes, we run south on Monday. So if something happens, one of our trucks come down, it may be late in the day, but some of our trucks that are coming from the, even further south, whether it's Nordheim or Rungy, uh, they're coming this way, and, or if it's Carn City, they'll come in there to come help and support, to be sure we get a plenty picked up on that day. And that's the reason we went to the Monday, Thursday, to pick, to pick, 'cause everybody else is picked up, you're the only city in this area that gets twice a week service, and it's a Monday, Thursday, everybody else in this area is serviced on Monday.
This list that you talked about, uh, where do you get this list? I'm assuming from the city?
Yes.
So that's our fault. If they don't have the address to somebody, or somebody didn't receive a notice, we drop the ball. They can only med it out if they have the addresses. Is that fair?
Yeah, but we can, we can coordinate with them to be sure we get an updated list on, on a regular basis. And I know we try to get a, a, a house count, we used to get our house count on a regular basis, so we keep up with the, the billing that we need to give to go out to the city. And if we can get something, and, and if we're not getting that on a monthly basis, if we set that up on monthly, we'll be sure we're billing the, the correct number of homes per month, rather than it being the same number each month, and that would help all of us on that.
Okay. Do we have motion?
I'm making motion if we approve, uh, item number eight on the night agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion on this item? If there's no other discussion, please call up.
Counselor Breonis?
May.
Counselor Witt?
Yes.
Counselor Sinek?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll make sure we have an accurate list for you guys.
I'll get in touch with Chris and with Amanda, we'll make sure we get everything squared away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance nineteen fifteen, and ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending Article Three, Water System Division One of the City of Kennedy Code ordinances to include sections eighty-six, one ninety-three through one ninety-three, to provide for sale of wholesale water by the City of Kennedy to any other entity, reselling water, and to enter into wholesale water supply contracts with said entities adopting applic, uh, um, my apologies, applicable provisions of the city's water conservation and drought contingency plan in compliance with thirty-two AC two-eight-eight prior to the sale of any wa, wholesale water by the city to the water reseller. Is there a presentation on that?
Mayor, Council, this is, uh, again, part of our Community of Springs project, and this will allow us to begin contacting other cities, other government entities who might be interested in purchasing some of their water, if it'll come out of their hands or else.
And this isn't, that's, just because we passed this, this doesn't mean we have to start selling our water. It's just to, I, I know that, I just wanna make sure it's aware that this just allows us the ability to talk to other municipalities or other entities, to see if they're interested in purchasing water, if we expand, when we expand in the Carrizo, so we know to possibly do a larger.
That's correct. And if, you're, you're still not obligated, you could be approached by another entity, and they said, we'd like to buy water, and say, well, you know, we just not gonna have enough to provide it. It gives you the option to do so if you choose.
So with all this that we had discussed last week, has anybody reached out to you? Just curious, have you even reached out to you, or said anything, since we've had this ongoing discussion?
Not yet. We've Not yet. We decided to get this in place before we really had any conversations, but I believe there may be some interest.
It's hard to negotiate without this.
Right. I just didn't know if somebody had already reached out to you, if they had heard about it already, because I know it's kind of.
Somebody that's heard of having ordered.
Right, and so I was just curious to see if anybody's reached out to you, please.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance nineteen dash fifteen.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Win?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number ten, consideration and discuss authorization for the city to request bids for the East Main Street paving project in the city of Kennedy, Texas. I'm going to assume that there's a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, if we can, thank you guys, thank you. If we can get the presentation, and then we'll allow the public speaker's statement, some of the questions could be answered with the presentation.
Mr. Hernandez is here.
Okay.
To talk about those bids, and what we're going to ask for, and what's in the woodblock, and answer any questions you might have for the project today.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor.
How you doing?
So now, the time has come to, we have completed our plans for the East Main paving project. So this is the last phase of East Main, and we're ready, upon council approval, to authorize bids for the plans. And so as, as discussed before, this, this project, and it's had approximately eight inches of limestone base, two inches of blacktop, and the raised road approximately ten inches, which is approved. So with authorization, the request to go to bids, so we can use this space for.
So everything else is done, as far as what's being, the lines that were laid, and everything is ready?
Yes. Okay, so just to refresh everybody's memory, the waterline project was done way before, and then last year, we did the gas line, and then recently, we did the sewer lines, and, and the project. So everything, all the lines have been adjusted. The drainage project here is ongoing. So with all the utility lines already being lowered, I don't anticipate any more issues arising. And we come to this last phase, and we're reconstructing the road, because everything will be below, reconstruction.
John, is the sewer completed or not completed?
Yes.
The sewer part of this is done?
Yes.
Is it working properly?
Yes.
Okay.
In my opinion.
And the drainage, are we still working on the drainage?
Yes, we are. There's two issues here. The majority of the drainage is completed on East Main. The outfall, where eventually goes out north to, to the Tributary Creek, is, is temporarily on hold. At the time, we reached a final about either a month ago, that outfall belongs to San Antonio River Authority, and, and they're reviewing, we were going to make the application towards them, we submitted all the documents that are required, and they're currently reviewing our set of plans. We've already received, we've been in contact almost maybe a weekly basis with, with those agency. They have not indicated any major concerns or comments. However, they did forward it to another agency, and I don't know the exact name, but it has to do with the Soil Conservation Service folks, and they called me here last week to begin their review process. But here again, we're not changing the drainage flows. All the water naturally goes to the north. All we're doing is improving conveyance. In other words, how the water gets to the outfall.
Improving the flow.
Improving the flow. That's all we're doing. And so there's two, two tributaries. One is the concrete line channel, is Nichols Creek. That's also the San Antonio River Authority folks, and then the natural tributary creek to the north. So we still have to begin work to excavate a channel from the outfall at the end of East Main, the east end, so the water can flow north to the creek. That portion of work is on hold until the San Antonio River Authority folks have given Hanson and the city, slash city, permission to proceed forward. Same with Nichols Creek. That's, that's what they're looking at. So I would say the majority has been done.
But you won't be able to, you, you, even though we would approve the bids going out tonight, you wouldn't be able to do the finish process until that piece was completed, correct?
That's correct, yes. So this, this process on the paving project, if we receive permission today, we still have to go through, after the processing, the bidding process, or it takes, it has to be advertised in the paper twice, it takes a minimum fourteen days, and then we have a bid open. And so right now, if we can, if we thought, for example, for authorization today, we could advertise tomorrow, it was Wednesday, that's good. That's the publishing date for the Karn Countywide, and then the following Wednesday, but then after that, it's Christmas week, so the bid opening would have to be sometime in Jan, during part of January, to do that. So we can receive bids, and then here again, try to meet council's schedule. So we would review the bids and make recommendations. It's going to be pretty tight to have the second Tuesday of the month of January. But if there really goes planned, after that, we make the award, then after that, it takes approximately thirty, maybe forty-five days for the contractor to begin work, because he has to get his bids, he has to get his bonds, he has to get his insurance, things like that. So the earliest we can begin to work on East Main is probably sometime early part of February. So by that time, we're going to wrap up the drainage project. Because, like I said, we've been in communication with the River Authority folks, and they haven't, there's been no indication that there's an issue.
It really would be the later part of February.
Right, more or less, because of holidays and things like that. Yes, sir.
We should be, we should be able to have all of those issues resolved.
That's correct, you're right.
Prior to and before any.
Yes, and certainly the contractor, he, he's, you know, he's, he's ready to move on to another job. He's been, there's been a lot of untimely delays on the job, not only for him, but for the city, and for the residents on East Main. So a lot of them have been unanticipated, because this job has been, it's been over a year now, since we awarded the bids. That's what happens sometimes. On all facilities, it hasn't been dug up in many, many years, you can find a lot of unknowns, and it's sometimes common, and the street system like that has a, where the utilities have been there for years and years and years. And it's just, it was just time to upgrade everything, as well as the road and the drainage, and things like that, so, yes, sir.
Okay, anything else for John?
So about the project over there on the far side, towards the field where the water's going to be shooting out, that's the pipe that's going to go into there, correct? It's going to be underground, everything's going to be back flushed. A lot of people drive it into the residency, going up and over about once.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point to make. Part of this project, the drainage project, is everybody's, the private driveways are to be rebuilt under the drainage. But then the contractor is not there yet. He, he wants to do the main part first, and then he'll come back and restore the driveways to the existing conditions. Some of them are concrete, some of them are base, some have the silkworm driveways. But we haven't been all listed yet for the contractor to do this. And that's part of the ongoing contract with the drainage project.
And those areas that don't have cove works is because that's how the project's drawn up, correct? It doesn't need a cove.
That's correct, you're right. So I said, most of the project, I would say about just two-thirds of the project is for the water designed to flow to the east, and then north. And then one block is to, is to go to the west, to the Nichols Creek or the concrete line drainage facility that's already there.
The project has open drains, and all the water is designed to hit those drains from all angles, correct?
That's, that's correct.
I know there's several of them, but when it rains, all the water's meant to go that way to hit it, and then shoot out.
As far as I know, there's only one issue that we've come across, and that's about there. The southwest corner of Morning, there's water standing now. The plant's had called for a drainage inlet there, but according to city, the city utility folks, there was a, there was a conflict that we cannot adjust the utility line there. And so we're going to have to re-drain the street to a different direction to the east, so we'll make this thing one of the.
And you'll do that when you do the final process?
Well, we're going to try to do it on this one here, because it's, it's like a, a big driveway there too. The other one here, the next phase, since we're raising the road, there's better opportunity to sheet flow it away from the intersection. Right there at that intersection, right in the middle of the road, there's a sewer line that's right there. And so at a vanity corner, where you turn in little radius, there's a, some type of a, they, they talk of the turn, it has to do with a water line, a water block, or a water stop system. And it's a pretty big facility. It cannot be adjusted, it would be pretty impractical to adjust it. The other option would be, and I don't really recommend this, is put a drainage, drainage inlet right there in the radius return. But we may do that with the next phase with the hot mix, because right now, this phase, it'll work temporarily, but it may be clogged until we have it, put the final finish, and then we can raise it in it, and it'll be surrounded by much better material to drain, around the road material. So that's an option here, to, to stoke a couple of things that we can work out here with the contract.
And when the project's complete, everything's done, go back and access everything, and if some stuff doesn't meet the requirement that the project was originally supposed to entail, we'll go back and fix it or do corrections.
Well, I, I.
Hopefully, it doesn't happen, but accidents do happen, and that's, that's just a possibility. You can never rule out the possibility of an accident happening, but the contractor will go back out there and take care of the trouble?
Right, well, that's.
Basically, before, before, before we, before we issue final payment, you would certify that everything meets.
That's, that's correct.
The guidelines and everything that we've said in place.
That's correct.
And once that's done, the contractor should be, we all should be good.
That's correct, yes, sir. And that's standard practice in all the contracts we do. We hope to, we call about ten percent retainage months, just for that particular reason. So on a job like this, we're, we're probably withholding fifty or sixty thousand dollars to perform all the punch, and that's, and that's a contractor incentive, he can finish everything, make sure the city is satisfied, we're satisfied, and everyone else is satisfied before we have issued final reason, acceptance of the project.
So you did say with those currently, right now, going up and over, and the driveways are going to be redrawn?
Oh, that's correct. That's part of the, that's part of the existing drainage project right now? Yes, yes, that's correct.
So they're going to be lowered, like you're saying? They're going to be lowered to their satisfaction of the customers?
No, they're going to be, wherever, the drainage flow is there, the pipe is there now. But we're going to have to tie in, and since you got to remember, the roads can be raised ten inches, profile. So right now, when they rebuild it, it'll be a little bit rough. I mean, the driveway portion will be rough, but the tie-in is going to be off a little bit till we have the next paving project in place, and then it'll be tied in properly, or transitioned to the driveways.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Like, were you saying that y'all are going to go ten inches, right, more?
Raising the road.
We don't need the road higher, we need the road just like the way it is.
Yes, sir.
If you go ten inches, where the water's going to go, it's just going to go there, but across the street. There's not going to be no drainage across the street, just in my sight. So I was going to work, and then you're saying that, that everything's going to work like the drainage. If you really go out there, see the drainage that y'all put, or where we put them on, they're just high off the ground. What, what water's going to go in there? The rain, when it falls in there, that's the only water that's going to get in there? Because the ground, the, the, the thing's like this high off the ground, and then the land's this far off your property. What is the water going to do? You're going to have to have a flood, so the water can go over inside that drainage?
Well, the only thing I know that's, that's sticking out high is we call the, the cleanout, or the.
No, it's not a cleanout, it's a drainage.
No, no, we're getting it, we call it a manhole.
Right.
So it'll connect the two pipes together.
Right.
That's one thing sticking up high above the ground. That's not designed to take the water. It's just going to stay high like that.
But how, how's the water going to run from your property to that deal? Like, if the pipe's under the ground?
Right.
How are you going to get the water into?
It's, it's flowing there, because the ditch, the.
No, I'm not talking about the ditch right now. I'm talking about further up East Main.
To, towards the east end.
To where the creek is at?
To six hundred block.
Yeah, on, yes, please.
Six twenty.
Is it, okay, is it the concrete line?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that one.
Yes.
That's, that's what I was saying. There's one inlet there on the north side that's a little bit high.
All of them, not just one?
Okay. But, yeah, I know, I'm not, I'm not sure it was two or three, but I know that it's on the north side. It's supposed to be high. So those ones originally were not supposed to be there, but they had to be, they're supposed to be in the current, but there was an existing gas line there at that time, so we had to relocate it behind the road, or to the north of the road.
Right, but why did y'all put them so high? If you already relocate them, there's no gas line there, why did y'all put them so high?
Well, those were installed before the gas line.
So it's going to stay like that, that's what you're trying to say?
Yes, yes, sir.
Then why do it? Just leave it like the way it was? Just take that thing off and leave, leave the water in there?
Well, that's, that's still a possibility, like I said, that during construction, there was another unknown utility conflict at, at that time.
I think the only thing y'all doing, you just making an excuse.
I have to.
Like, hold on, hold on.
I have to caution you, because it's, it's, did you sign up to discuss this issue?
No, but I'm here because of East Main.
Well, you, you signed up to discuss the issue, the, our speaker has, I think, answered, you know, your question. After the meeting.
You see, I'm, I'm telling you, you're just covering up for him. That's what you're doing, you're covering. That's what you're doing, y'all just covering up for each other. Y'all going to do something, do it right.
This is protocol.
It don't make no difference, protocol. You do the, the job right, we're paying for it. And then now we're paying a, a big water bill, just for a contractor to go over there and make a mess? How would you like me to go to your place and make a mess at your place?
We're going to make it right for you.
No, y'all ain't going to make shit right.
That's okay. That's okay.
You, you signed up to speak, you, you can't.
She, I said, well, did.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have some photos here, just, so anybody, I don't know if y'all can pass them around, can get a general idea of what's going on. I live on East Main also as well, and, and my concern is on that six hundred block, you say the roads are going to go up ten inches, but the ditch is already like over three feet deep, right in front of the residents, in front of their homes. I mean, there's children there, there are, my elderly grandmother, you know, she's active, but I don't think she can make that jump. She doesn't have a way around, except through only one covert in her driveway, and it's very narrow, so she doesn't even have an entryway to her house anymore. And so that, the, the plan has been changed at least twice, and I'm going to say, I haven't gotten notice of any meetings or any changes in the plan for us to even come in here. So the only times we are in contact is whenever I ask Brandon, or we ask Brandon, what the update is on the drainage project, and then we're getting the new updates on the changes. So we're not getting any notices on things like that are changing, and as residents that live there, I think the first person that should get notice is the residents that live there. So again, that's, it's really unacceptable. It is. There, it's very dangerous, it's very hazardous, those ditches. And I don't know, like you said. There, it's very dangerous, it's very hazardous, those ditches, and I don't know, like you said, maybe the original plan wasn't intended in that way, but due to all these utilities, but it has to be made right, that is very dangerous. But the youth living there, the elderly, there's not even a room for anybody with a wheelchair to enter in to their properties. It's very hazardous on that side, and anybody who, you know, would be forced to live there would understand and would have some compassion, at least on the elderly and the youth there, in consideration, to at least make sure that the residents are aware and understand before moving forward, especially with the paving. We don't wanna wait to see if, how it works out. This isn't just some little minor issue that we can come back and say, okay, can we fix this, this, and that? No, we don't, we waited over twenty years for this. And so it has to be done right the first time, it doesn't matter how long it takes. The funds are there for recreational and entertainment purposes, they have to be there for residential needs also. So I just say, you know, implore you all to understand, you know, just based on what you see there, and at least come down there and go and look. And I know you do, I don't know how much you're down there, but somebody needs to see and understand how it really is, and it's very bad. And the flow, I don't know how it's even gonna flow, it's gonna get clogged, they say the city's gonna be responsible for maintaining the, the flow and, and the maintenance on that, I mean, it looks bad, and there's one spot where like there's roots everywhere. It doesn't look to me like it's gonna even flow well. So aside from the depth and the hazard on the, the depth of the ditch, then the raising ten inches more? Or scrape it up and then ten inches?
No, it's, the gray is gonna be ten inches above.
So ten inches above where it's already at?
That's, that's correct.
And it's already raised pretty high. So, and then the culverts are, they're culverts in front of the six hundred block, those are very high. I don't know why, other ones down the street are more smaller, and to me, I'm not questioning the engineers, I don't know how they came about, you know, all their proportions, but I mean, before, it was nothing, there was a lot of flooding. So I would, I would think it needs to have it a reasonable height, it's still gonna be better than it was before, not hazardous to them going in and coming out. So that's all.
I just wanna know who approved that this is gonna work? I mean, unless you live there, or unless you're like really look at it and design it, and I'm just, it's not finished, and I, I know they told me, it's like a puzzle, okay, the puzzle's almost finished, and it's not looking like it's gonna work. Like my husband went out, there's a drains from the ground, this much. So the water's gonna have to, the water's gonna have to get this high in order to go into the drain? This high, but it shouldn't even get that high, it shouldn't even get this high because there's already a drain that it's supposed to be going into and running out, running out to east, to the north, like you said. And I live more down to the east, down to the bed end. I have a culvert, I mean, if a hurricane or something comes, I can probably hide in there. I'm trying to say, I have to go over and to get in my house, I have to go over and step down and go into my house. Now, you're gonna pave the road ten inches more, so how much is it ten inches more from what we have right now? So how high is it gonna be? And then the sides, I don't know, did y'all see the ground? The, what are, are they gonna stay like that? Are they, because they're supposed to pu- put grass.
I have to caution, did you sign up to speak?
Yes, sir, I did, yes, sir, I did.
Okay, but the council can't answer your questions, but they can hear your concerns.
I, I can answer.
Huh?
Is it good?
Yes, please.
Please.
Well, the ditches, the floor line is more or less the elevation it is now, they, they still need to be dressed up because they're, they're not to the font of configuration, but the depth, that's, that's gonna be permanent.
The depth, the, the depth, like the?
The height, it's gonna be, that's gonna be a permanent solution, but.
So these ditches in her pictures are going to be that depth, and it's gonna stay that way?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a hole, that's not even sideways, that's like really just like a hole, a trench, a trench that just goes on.
And then all the way at the end of the street, about a block long, the culverts are connected, and they're at least covered with dirt. There's no ditches, right, all the way towards the end? So they're culverts connecting, and yeah, they're raised high, and there's a, a raise, a bump on them, but at least they're connected, and it's not open and exposed, but the way the rest of it is. I'm not saying that that's a consolation to the height, but you know, for elderly and the youth, it's much more dangerous to have just an open ditch that way than having it all covered, a covered trench.
Do you have any idea what that is?
Oh, that was a gas, Lori, what is that?
What is that? It's, I don't know, I don't know what it is.
Mr. Brandon? This part right here, this is what I was talking about when I was going to, this was supposed to be covered with a pipe going through the, like, oh, is this gonna stay open?
Yes, that's part of, initial, what is it?
Okay, because understanding this was gonna be covered, and it's supposed to be a pipe that goes through the ground, that's why I was asking, but there're gonna be any culverts right here?
No, that's, 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 it was gonna be called open channel. Of course, it's gonna be stabilized.
Right, so what, what's gonna, what's gonna keep? Because you're gonna, this road is gonna be another ten inches higher than this, right?
That's correct.
So what's gonna keep, like she said, what's gonna keep a child from walking through the, I mean, I don't.
I was wondering, see, see if you can assert that as well, that as it's gonna be finished, anything.
And they made a culvert on my entrance to the gate to go into my house, okay, but just like two houses down, my mom doesn't have an entrance to her gate, she just has to park in the driveway to go in, and the driveways are just, okay, that little. And then you go further up, just next door, six fifteen East Main, they took their entrance, other than the parking, right, just the parking. They're not gonna have their gate, they're not gonna have, like, to go into the homes. You either have to park in there or park on the road and just go in through the parking.
And so the future, if we have to park on the road, we're gonna have to park ten inches higher next to like a four foot ditch? Because there's only one culvert, one entryway, and like for the six fifteen neighbor, the mom has a wheelchair, or one in their family, so they can't even, through the one entrance that they're given now, they're having a hard time getting to the home, to the ramp on the six fifteen. Because they would go through the front of the home, right, where their walkway was.
Well, yeah, right, there used to be access, your access is not longer there.
For the elderly, the disabled, the youth.
Mr. O'Nabre? Can you and the city manager go through there and assess it, and come back and give the council exactly what the findings are?
Sure.
Okay, can we do that?
Y'all want to take, we, we're just trying to jump the gun a bit on.
No, I believe the paving needs to go through, and I agree with, I, I believe the paving, we need to get the bids while we can get the bids, and the longer we wait, yes, but we do need to address their concerns.
This is, this is not acceptable as a finished job.
And you see that trench, there's a tree, and the roots are all in the way, they kinda just tried to go around it. So that's, that's the water flow, that's what they're saying is gonna flow.
I'm afraid, you know, even if the water's flowing, somebody's petting, walking down, falling in the water and drowning.
Our kids.
Our kid.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't, you drown an inch of water.
Very dangerous, yeah.
But you got three feet of trench here.
My pleasure.
Thank y'all. Thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
Can we keep your picture?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have anything else for John? No. What, what do you guys wanna do? I'd like to add some safety, some safety precautions, and perhaps accessibility to some of these people who pretty much lost any access to getting into their property.
Yeah, but we can't, we, we can't do that.
Well, we can't, no, not tonight, but yes.
But what David, if David's gonna go out there and assess, of course, he can bring that back to us, and we have to have a special meeting.
Of course.
Get that done, we can get that done. Y'all, y'all remember when, when I presented, when John wasn't here, we evaluated four options, and we gave you a fourth option, which is the one you chose, which is how these plans were put together that we're considering tonight. The, the real project initially was only a drainage project. And there was no drainage in this area, and we had a workshop or two, I think, to talk about how we would approach the drainage on the project, before there were any utilities or paving or anything else, just doing a drainage project. And, and so the issue on East Main was there was no drainage. It was essentially like they're describing.
Flat.
I mean, there was puddles in the road, there was puddles at the intersection, there was puddles everywhere. It didn't go anywhere, evaporate. So in order to get the water to run off, we have to create a little bit of a ditch. In order to get the water to flow down the street, we've got to have a line that runs down the street for it to drain. Okay, so when it rains, it's gonna hold water, if it quits raining, it's gonna run off, but you'll still have a hole. That's how it's gonna work.
A three feet hole?
If we need a three foot hole, it needs to be a three foot hole, if we need a one foot hole, it needs to be a one foot hole. To go under a driveway, it's gotta be a couple of feet deep, because we have to put an eighteen inch pipe.
I was gonna say, what if y'all, I don't know, 'cause, well, you know, whatever y'all did right now's not working, so. The six, I, I live in six thirty-one, Jimmy Hinojosa lives right next to me. From there on, they put, they covered it all up, all, I mean, they covered the whole thing. Instead of leaving us a hole like that, why don't y'all just cover the whole thing? And just put all the, all the connecting holes.
So there is, there is an issue here of cost, and there was not an unlimited cost to do the drainage. So we had, I think, nine different options that we put in front of the community, the neighborhood. And we talked through all nine options about what the alternatives were, how some were better than others, some, they were all various prices and everything else. The option that we chose was one that was first in budget and then also accomplished drainage. So, I mean, they all worked, but this was the one that, that the neighborhood was behind. And we talked through all these things, and I don't remember who was at the workshop, I remember, you know, a dozen people were there, which was good. I mean, it was a great discussion, I do, I do remember that. But the, but the point I'm making is it's not finished yet, and when it rains, it's gonna fill the ditches, because that's what it's supposed to do, and when it quits raining, it's gonna run off. So until they get that outfall finished, which John mentioned, the, there are two agencies reviewing our plans for improvements. We don't expect that they'll disapprove those, we think that they're going to approve those, but until they finish their review, we really can't continue to work on the outfall. The outfall's what allows the water to run off. Now, as far as the depth of the ditch, I mean, obviously the ditches that were created there originally have filled in over time. That's why there weren't any ditches there, and there weren't any culverts there either. So water was running over driveways to get down the street toward the east end and out. We're gonna, we're gonna fix all that so that the water runs off very quickly, but it, it won't work until we can finish up the work that goes out to the creek. So we, we're kind of in between a rock and a hard place here. I mean, I can go look at it, but I kinda know what the problem is, it's not finished, and it's, it's gonna work once it's finished. It's just gonna have some ditches that y'all aren't used to, they're gonna be deeper than they were.
So it's gonna work, so it's gonna be hazardous?
Well, you know. I, I don't know how to, to explain that it's, it's only a hazardous condition when it's raining. You know, otherwise, it's, it's traversable, you can plant grass in it if you want, you can cut the grass, you can do whatever you wanna do in the ditch to, to make it better, but it's still gonna need to carry water. I mean, that's the point of doing this, you've gotta create a ditch to carry water.
So is that a ditch or is that a trench? Is it the same thing?
It's a trench.
Same trench.
Okay, because this one doesn't go like this, this one just goes like this.
I think when they get it finished, it will have slope, they'll, they'll slope in.
That's correct.
So that it's that way. My concern today is, how do these people get across that? If, I mean, we can't put something out there where they can cross safely?
What about connecting culverts and cover them all up? I mean, I'm just, my suggestion, right there where I live, 'cause in the entrance of East Main, in the entrance, it's paved, there's curves, there's no holes on the side or anything, it's just like when you start getting more to the.
To the east.
The second block, or the third block?
Yeah. And becomes a little bit dangerous.
I'm just trying to see, if there's not a group throughout the whole road, why is there only a trench in a certain area? And everything else is fine, but just in that area, there's trenches, you know what I'm saying? From the point A to point B, instead of being a whole trench, there's only trenches in a certain area. That's just her question, is why can't they, it all either be closed, or why isn't it all a trench? That's exactly what she's just trying to say.
Right, I believe part of it's culvert, part of it's curb, and part of it's underground drainage.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm assuming your, or your question sounds to me like, why isn't it all one or the other?
Closed, yeah.
Why isn't it all underground drainage?
Well, preferably underground, obviously.
Yeah, only because of the hazards, yeah, I mean, we won't have like that.
I mean, we waited over twenty years, and we know there's a cost factor here, as is, as is with any project that you do, and I'm pretty sure we've already gone out of the budget of when it should be started. But again, it's been over twenty years, and this is not something that's recreational or for leisure. It is a necessity, and it's a need, and it just feels unfair to even weigh on anybody's conscience that the elderly and the youth would be left in hazardous residence, living residence, where they live every single day, not work, where they come and go, but they have to, to worry about, you know, the hazards, just to not have flooding, I mean, which one was better?
What also concerns me right now with these pictures that I just see, is EMS gets down there, how are they supposed to get to the person they need with that thing like that? I mean, they're supposed to go, roll the stretcher straight down the ditch, come back up and over, get in there, then if it's a serious injury, you have to come back? I mean, there's gotta be some way of getting in there.
I'm, I'm assuming, and I'm just assuming, that when this is done, all the driveways will be finished so that they can drive in and out of their driveways without any.
That's correct, that's, that's part of the plan.
Okay, so that'll, all the driveways will be back?
That'll be back, okay, but, but, yeah, but the drop-off will, will still gonna be there.
But not the driveways, the driveway will be.
That's correct.
Straight across.
That's correct.
After the ten inch streak, you're gonna build that?
You'll still, yeah, you, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. My, my, in my head, what I see is a completed project where you have driveways that are, where you drive off the road, onto your driveway, and own, own to your home, and the water goes under that. And where you don't drive is where you have the.
The ditch.
The, the ditch. Am I saying that right?
No, it's correct, sir.
Okay. Okay.
So in, in one matter, can I just request, I guess urgently, maybe as a consolation, that at least for my grandmother, you know, to, to, for immediate consideration, in front of her home, a culvert there, and the neighbor, the neighbor has a wheelchair, her mother or sister in a wheelchair, so again, the driveway that is there, it's small, and it's for a vehicle, so it's kinda hard to, you know, kinda squeeze in there and, and get in and out.
You want, you're, you're asking to have the culvert extended for ease of entrance to that?
I mean, we would love for that, the entire ditch area, but the immediate concern I have is for my grandmother in front of her home.
She wants to make a little bridge across the.
Yeah, she's already like trying to get material around her where, you just throw some boards down, it's a problem, that's ridiculous.
What address?
What's her address?
Hers is six fifteen, it's the Hunter Green House in the pictures?
Six nineteen.
The picture, six nineteen, the pictures, though, that was before the ditch was dug out, so now she does have that three or four foot ditch.
So it's six nineteen?
Six nineteen, and then to the left of hers is a six fifteen, and I believe there's someone in the wheelchair.
Is there, is there a good time where we get out there and talk about it?
Um, yes, tomorrow.
Anytime tomorrow? Is that all right?
Yeah, I think so, maybe shoot, about ten o'clock or something, is that okay?
Okay. I mean, let's, let's look at it and see what we can, I mean, if it's a problem, let's fix it, if it's not a problem, let's make sure it's not a problem. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank, most of what we've talked about is drainage, I, I don't know if y'all wanna actually put off the paving idea for another meeting, or go ahead with it? If they wanna. The, the biggest thing for us is just making sure that the paving don't take place until after this has been resolved. It's gonna take two months from now, if you say yes tonight. Exactly, that's, that was, that was my point, that's what I was saying, it's gonna be close to the end of February, it will prove this tonight.
That's correct.
So I think it needs to.
So, I think it needs to be...
And we can always hold off the next contractor until this guy is finished.
Exactly.
We need to. But it'd be better to go ahead and get it started, and the plan would be to take bids after January first.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Do you ladies have anything else on that? So, ten o'clock tomorrow is good for you? Okay. Is there anybody else from the public signed up for comment?
No sir.
No? Okay.
Just one more comment. Here again, I mean, uh, I know the council and everybody discussed the paving option, that's why I threw it out there sometimes. We've visited other paving options.
I, I think that there's some, they have a great paving option.
I think the option for paving is good. We just wanna get it done. Yeah, we just wanna get this, this hiccup taken care of, so that it's not something we're looking back on a year from now, saying, we wish, we should've, would've, could've. And, you know, writing these pictures and doing what you did, that's, that's greatly appreciated and greatly needed, because some of us don't get the opportunity to actually go see. So, thanks.
Okay, do you guys have any movement on item number ten?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the city to request bids for the East Main paving project for the city of Kennedy.
And I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Councilor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilor Witt?
Yes.
Councilor Science?
Yes.
Councilor Kohn?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you guys.
Okay. Yes. Any questions? I mean, we have, uh, we have a couple of jobs solved. Okay, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move to item number fourteen. Consideration of possible action in regard to an oil, gas, and mineral lease agreement with Repsol Oil and Gas USA LLC. Presentation.
Mr. Pat Falbush is here. Okay. If, uh, so if you have any specific questions. This is a lease on three pieces that will run approximately ten thousand feet under. The three pieces of property we own, all together, all three pieces of property are less than, um, an acre. Between the three of them, in fact, they're very small chunks. We just happen to own them, uh, and they, we can lease those so they can earn some revenue on it underneath.
Where is the property?
It's on Houston Street, you know where Rupi's live? The creek right across the street is in that area right behind it.
There, there are actually three little pieces that are not for a bar.
Most of them were conveyed to the city for the, for the road, for the roadway back. So, they're little, small little slivers between property. Most people don't recognize them as usable acreage on that, but they are due to the city and haven't been conveyed out, so technically, the city is the record title owner of the property.
And all you want is to run pipelines under it?
No, what, uh, what, it's a oil and gas lease, there's an existing unit there, and these tracks are on lease. So, it's just mopping up and getting these little tracks that we discovered to cool them into the existing unit so we can continue to do additional, uh, laddles.
Okay.
Dolpho, your opinion?
Oh, the, uh, we, uh, we satisfy the stature requirement regarding bidding to lease, so I'll have to put the newspaper and then see who bids for the lease. And I believe that's done, and we all responded. So, they're the only responded to the advertisement. So, uh, we're...
Hazardous activity is a problem.
Yes, yes. The, the only thing is, I have no idea how you price it or how much they pay you. That is something that I don't know. That's just something that we have to count on.
Okay, so what is the question for us?
You approved leasing this one onto Repsol. But we don't know what they lease for or anything, or is that already said?
That's about, send a sealed bid, I mean, I'll be happy to, we bid, but are we supposed to?
It's, well, it's, it's the, uh, the, the, in a sense, they can reward the, the, uh, the lease deal because you're the only one who...
Okay.
They did that. And then, within the, uh, because since you're the only one that bid, uh, you have the reward, then you could talk to the council about the, you know...
Okay, if I have the reward, then I'll be happy to discuss the, the, the terms of the lease then. Is, is that the case?
Yeah, you could, yeah, so the council members can understand what the city's going to do.
And, and so you know that there's, uh, the city is leased with, uh, Repsol and Equinor already on other tracks in this unit. So, these are just a couple additional tracks. What I did is I used the same lease form that we've done previous, try to keep it as simple as possible, the same terms of what we've done before. I need to change it on that, you have a bonus, we'll all be, and everything, closest possible to the previous lease. And, you know, it was agreeable then, let's do it now. So, that, those are the conditions that I put on my lease, uh, lease proposal.
Who, who has seen the numbers sent at this time?
Is that the actual bid right there?
This is the lease.
And which, which pool, which lease is this getting tied into?
It would be, uh, tied into the Kendrue Ly unit. Uh, there's already that unit's in place, and there's a couple other laddles that have been drilled further east. Now, they wanna do some infill, so additional laddles in that unit, uh, infill wells that will go further underneath the city now. So, again, this would, this would benefit the city in the fact that already there's leases that the city has in that unit, we've already. But if we don't have this leased up, then we can't drill underneath there. We can't have a mineral, uh, you know, we trespass essentially, unless we work out some sort of agreement. The easiest thing is a lease, but if you guys elect not to lease, so that's, then we need to have some sort of easing, under an easing or something, so we can continue to lateral through to the other people in there and then pool it all in. There's no surface use on this, the, the pads offside and everything, really, it's, it's gonna be ten thousand people over the city, they really won't, already there's, you know, they won't be impacted at all. It's just more to pool the minerals into that unit and get additional revenue for the city. Thank you.
Have we had anybody that's an expert in looking at your agreements, look at it?
I do have one question about it. Um, this is pretty much just the same thing as like a county grant bonus form that y'all do, so, or... I know we get those through the counties, I work for the county judge, and it ranges from a thousand to two thousand dollars per acre, in which that's at fifteen hundred, so I...
And that's above the market now, on leases. Quite frankly, that's way above what I would take a lease for everybody else now. But, in the spirit of, that's what we've done in the past, let's just move forward to small acreage. Uh, but the market has gone down considerably from what that is. That's extremely high, but I just, in the interest of trying to move forward.
Again, your opinion. Your legal counsel boards?
Yes, the, uh, the agreement is sound, the, the stature requirements. With regard to, uh, what is gonna be paid with consideration, that's something that the, the council has to decide on. Market structure or market pricing for oil and gas is not experienced. But, uh, the, uh, that's, again, uh, up to the council, but if they have experience with the company before, then that, that's a, that's a plus, but on, on the consideration, I cannot...
I would like to see from the council, um, table it. Have somebody review that contract, that agreement, that's familiar with it. Nothing against you, but it's not my money. So, I, I just have to do what's best for everybody involved. And that, that's what I'd like to see, because you just heard your, the opinion from like our representative.
Well, if, the only issue is just...
I have a question, I have a question on that. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. You've already reviewed the contract.
Yes.
The contracts are, are sound and agreeable. We've already dotted the i's and crossed the t's. The only piece that we're in question of is the dollar amount. And we're getting the same dollar amount that we got when we originally did it, correct?
Previous, yeah, previous agreements that we've done for this unit, yes.
For that unit. And we are in a down market right now for oil and gas lease, because most of it's already leased up and all of them gone to somewhere else. But, that's just...
We're just pad located, if you don't mind me asking. Sure, it's, it's north, uh, north outside of town. Trying to think, the old Lyons property? Up, up by Escondido Creek, far out of town. And so, they're gonna come in. It's a different pad for a different unit that's further east of town. They use the same unit and then directionally drill over to get into city, so they don't disturb any of the smaller city tracks.
Yeah.
So, the pad is already there from a well already. So, it's just basically, this is all an infill. They just wanna fully develop the unit and get the most production out of that unit for everybody, including the city. Like I said, that has, already has some leases in the unit already. But if, if we don't have this lease, it puts back that production, because they, again, they cannot... That, that basically says, well, there's holes in the unit and they can't drill through it. So, it puts that, those future laddles on hold, essentially, unless they come up with a agreement.
And again, I would ask you guys to give the city manager direction to seek a sound second opinion on the entire agreement, including the amount. Not, not that I doubt Adolpho, but I would just, I would recommend it. I don't know what else about that.
Are there further plans to drill on this pad? Sir? Are there further plans, are there any plans to further drill on this pad? This is a hole, quite frankly.
Without the...
Is that right? No, 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 no. They can't, because it's basically these tracks are not leased, they don't have rights to go drill.
Do we have a motion on anything?
Not yet.
I feel confident with the number. I know what the county's paying, or what the county is accepting right now. Um, this is well, right in the middle of what the county has been accepting. This is a number that the city of Kennedy has accepted before. Um, if Adolpho is saying that the lease has been reviewed and he okays it, then it's just our opinion. Do we want to accept fifteen hundred dollars per linear acre or not?
As a bonus.
As a bonus.
I would get a sound second opinion.
I'm, I'm good, Justin. I, I think what we, what we, what we're getting is fair and in a marketplace, you know, and, and our, our royalties is what, the royalties of what we've, what we've seen in the past and, you know...
May I ask you, um, to other consumers, what are y'all starting out at before y'all start negotiating per linear acre?
Uh, for net, or, well, for linear is for pipeline, but in this case, for net acres, for net acre, but yeah, I understand what you're saying. Right now, the market is probably five hundred, maybe, and even that's starting to go down. You know? Quite frankly, if I were to approach somebody for their land on that, five hundred for three-year.
And so, this is three times the upfront you're getting paid?
Again, the idea is just, you gotta get this unit.
I'll make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with Repsol Oil and Gas USA LLC.
I'm gonna caution you again, as long as everybody understands, you, you're talking to a guy that wants your property. He just told you he can't drill. This is so much different than a right-of-way for the county over a county road. This is a very big deal. And he may be giving you three times upfront for your bonus. You got a quarter percent on the minerals. I'm not an expert, but I would have somebody else that knows these things truly look at this. But you are entitled to make that motion, you would like to land.
Ever so, who? Did y'all buy somebody out Equinor or...
Sir?
Y'all just partners with Equinor?
Uh, I'm, I'm the broker for the land management company. I negotiate, um, I negotiate on their, on their behalf. Uh, we do the land work, the title research, uh, what the surveyor, the team together, uh, all that aspect, basically the, do the heavy lifting for them.
We have a motion on the table, I'm gonna second that motion.
Is there any other motions? Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion, call a roll.
Councilor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilor Witt?
Yes.
Councilor Science?
Yes.
Councilor Kohn?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
We have a public comment, if you mind.
Item number eleven, consideration of possible action in regard to an interlocal cooperation agreement with the county of Karnes and the city of Karnes City Volunteer Fire Department, Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department, Paul City Volunteer Department, Rungy Volunteer Fire Department, Gillette Volunteer Fire Department, and Karnes County Emergency Management. Provide agencies the use of ten twenty-sixth East Main, Karnes County, Texas, seven eight one one eight, to provide law enforcement, first responders, and emergency services a site for personnel to educate, train, and facilitate development of fire, police, and emergency protection for the citizens of Karnes County, Texas. Any public comments?
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Oh, God. That was great, the ladies to come in, I gotta be, it'd be nice if more people were coming. Stay there. Training center. I don't understand, uh, this is our city, this is our town, uh, why we would have to build, or, or, I mean, not build, but why would we have to go somewhere else to train our, our great firefighters, or police officers, or any first responders that we have here? I don't know why we would have to go and get trained somewhere else, whether it's ten miles down or two miles down, whatever. I think we have, uh, there's money. I think we all understand that. There is money where we can have our own training facility here in Kennedy, Texas. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No sir.
This is an agreement that we've worked on with the county and other agencies. It has been vetted by the city attorney's office, changes we have requested that they made were made. This gives us the right to utilize that, of course, scheduling with other agencies. But it also allows multi-agency interdisciplinary training. It's gonna be a very nice facility. There's a fire tower, which we do not have the ability to build at this time. And I think this is a sort of opportunity for us to cooperate with the county and the other agencies in the county to create that training facility and get part of that, and recommend that you put it, you know, in agreement.
And the, the facility also is going to have, um, oil and gas structures, like, um, what are they, the well?
It's gonna have, it's gonna have...
Wellhead.
Wellhead, it's gonna have...
Pile lines.
Train the guys how to fight oil fires, grass fires, building fires, as well as in, in training the police and the EMS will have. I think our chief is here and might have some additional comments.
Has the, have y'all approved y'all's portion of the interlocal agreement yet?
Well, uh... Approved, yeah, I mean, with the, with the county, yeah.
Right, okay. So, y'all, y'all, I guess my question is, y'all agree with the, with what the interlocal agreement itself says?
Yes.
Okay.
And like, like he's saying, why do we have to do it in Karnes City? Well, Karnes City's closer. Right now, we gotta send somebody to get trained and certify training that is with a power station over our neighbors, Beville, Stockdale, which Stockdale right now is not doing any training, uh, to get certified.
And are you guys are gonna be on a schedule? Is that how they're gonna set it up to, I'm just, was what curious?
Most of the time, yeah, scheduled for, if we're gonna go individually, but a lot of times, uh, it's gonna probably be more, hate to say, but it's gonna be more of us in Karnes City training together, probably.
Would you be good?
There also, as of right now, they've got more people certified to, uh, train for us to get certified, you know, from the state. Uh, we're working on that part. We've got, uh, right now, we've got two people that are certified to be instructors or pardon instructors. That's all we got. But having a facility that close, we can also go at night instead of the whole week of taking work, even off of work and stuff. And it's only five minutes away. Most of the time is that nobody can go, 'cause it's, gotta take a week out, away from work and vacation, or they've gotta go travel, and by the time they get in, it's late and so on and so on. Unfortunately, we can't have one in Kennedy. Why not? Just, we tried before and never did it. So now, now that this came up, now we want one here. I've tried it before and couldn't get one, okay? So this was our second option.
Well, I know you had mentioned y'all had looked at acquiring land and land...
Right, water and land and stuff. Try them. We, before we agreed with Karnes City, and I say we, me and Charlie, I went out there looking for real estate property and just trying to find real estate property that was on cost of half a million dollars, just for the property. But we still had to find water supply to it.
And this, this was a few acres, how did water supply?
This was donated to Karnes City a long time ago, the city, for whatever they wanted to use it. They've got a well there that's not used to the city anymore, but we've got all the water we should need.
We're in the middle of buying three hundred and sixty acres with water right under it.
But this is not the water, the river.
What are we talking about financially?
It's a hundred thousand dollar contribution, and then reading this, it looks like ten thousand dollars every five years. Is that per entity or is that divided up?
That's divided up. I talked to Jennifer about this. That's divided up between all of the entities. And then the only ongoing cost to us would be when we use the facility. If we use gas, if we use fuels, we'd be expected to replace those that we used up.
It's, most of it's gonna be propane fuel.
Explain to me, Adolfo, how the city can basically give away a hundred thousand dollars, but we're not gonna own any of that?
It's, well, with regard to the interlocal cooperation agreement, it's the, the contribution that the city's gonna make, and that's always discretionary. But if it's for a city purpose, then the agreement will provide that. The city has its use. I would imagine the facility is gonna cost more than a hundred thousand dollars.
No, I think it was right at six hundred, right?
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I just wanna know how it's legal, that's all.
No, it's between general lenders, so they could do these type of agreements.
And it's a hundred thousand upfront?
That's what the council, two budgets ago, was last budget or two budgets ago? Just last budget?
Last budget.
Decided to put in there towards this.
Two budgets ago, you were correct.
I thought it was two budgets.
It was.
Council, if I may?
Did you, yeah, he signed up for that, didn't he?
Just, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, get it wrong, or anybody feel different about it. Just, we do want the best training. I've been trained before, and I know what it's like to get certified and be safe and everything. And I did mention the guy to do the response, either police department, firefighters, emergency people, or whatever. We do want the best, and that's why we have meetings to discuss and figure out what is the best solution. I just, my opinion, just wanted to find out why we couldn't build our own, or didn't realize that it was gonna have a, you know, a tower to get trained on, or whatever. I mean, we don't have skyscrapers and like that, but it's important, especially with the oil and stuff. Something, the main thing is to be safe and be trained properly. I don't want y'all to get it wrong. That's not, that's not the intention.
There's a lot more to it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Out there, you know?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with the training center. Don't misunderstand me when I say that, okay? I want you to have your training center, and I really don't, it doesn't matter to me where it's at. Of course, me being the mayor of Kennedy, I sound foolish saying, send other people to other towns to spend tax dollars. I mean, that's the most foolish thing I could say. I understand, a lot has already been put into it. Before I got here, there'll be a lot when I'm gone. I'm all for it. But my job is to always find ways to keep people in Kennedy. That's what I'm supposed to do. And then I go and I have an engineer go and inspect our building one, and it's falling apart. And I know that we went through almost two hundred thousand dollars not too long ago, and we didn't fix a single thing in our building. I kinda look around like, what are we really doing? You know what I mean? Because you say you tried to do this before and it didn't work. I just have to know that we're taking care of what we're supposed to take care of before we bite off any more of the pizza, because it's a big pizza to bite off.
I understand that too, but you all forgot to understand that if I had the three years that I've been trying to fight and been negative and stuff and getting stuff, it's hard to get stuff. I mean, I appreciate the stuff that we are finally starting to get and move on. Like you said, I mean, this is kind of before your time, you just happened to walk into it. And I get your point too, except I did try or wanted to try to get it to have around here. Unfortunately, they've got more people behind them before we did. But we're finally getting city council and city behind the department and trying to improve us and do better for the city.
So a lot of stuff, basically, what it falls down to, I mean, we can all agree on this. The ladies that were here, neighborhoods that have been, need some potential, whatever, fire departments, police departments, vehicles, whatever, should have been taken care of years back. That's just the bottom line.
That's the bottom line. Now we're, you know, we're, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we consider item eleven on the agenda.
Second?
On second.
Is there any other discussion on this item?
You guys are gonna be able to use it whenever you want.
Well, we'll have a schedule, but yes, more likely, yes.
So when you're on that schedule, you can go use it, you're not gonna have any...
We don't have to, you know, it's not, we'll have our own key and everything else once we get it.
Can I go use it? No?
You can go with us.
I mean, but can anybody go with you?
No, not, not, nobody, just locals can't just go with you, you know?
Well, it's not gonna be a...
But I get what you're saying.
...for music. But you can go with...
I mean, thank you. All that stuff, they can get it.
I just wanna make sure that you guys, we're gonna put this in there for you. I just wanna make sure you guys are taken care of, because mine, our number one priority is you guys. If you guys are gonna put this money into this, and then down the line I say, oh, you can only use it once every six months, what the hell? You know? Sorry, excuse my language, but I don't want that for you guys. If you guys are gonna have this, I want you guys to be able to go every month if you need to, three or four times a month if you need to, whatever you guys need. But I wanna make sure you guys are taken care of. That's number one, that you guys are taken care of.
That's something that we'll try to, could you go to the agreement?
That's something that needs to be sent to the agreement. Wanna make sure you're not booted after you make your contribution.
That's right, I wanna make sure you guys are there.
And the city's bound, the city's bound to hold, to do this, that, and the other. But what is there to hold the other guys to make sure you guys get what you're supposed to get? I'm not an expert on the agreement.
Just make sure you guys can use it. I don't want you, like you said.
Well, I mean...
I just don't want you guys to be only be able to use it once every year.
It's possibly, it's agreement that we have, we can use it when we have the cash support. I mean, we can't go all wanna use it the same day.
No, no.
Unless it's gonna be the...
A mass training.
A mass training. And we've done that before in the past, you know? We get together, we invite the rest of the department to join us, and like I said, unfortunately, most of the time it's just us in Karnes City training together.
What's your opinion, Adolfo?
I think it's the, the interlocal agreement covers, there's five or six or seven participating entities. So it's, in the sense it's an agreement to participate together in the training center with regard to specifics between the Karnes and city of Kennedy, then it's, it's the, the interlocal agreement is, recognizes that there's individual agencies, that's what we call the government-owned agency, with regard to what the city can and can't. That's, that will be the agreement that was contemplated for, for the city's contribution. This is, just says, okay, everybody's a partner, everybody uses the facility. But it's not specific as the city of Kennedy or the volunteer fire department, because it involves other parties, if you know what I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
So this is...
Police department, emergency code, and, you know. If you're gonna have a training center so that you have an environment where your firemen and your police and your emergency folks can work in conjunction with each other, because if we have a mass situation, that's what we want. We want those agencies to be able to work within, work with each other and know how to get that done without stepping on each other's feet. We don't want the police and the firemen way, we don't want the firemen and the police way, we don't want the emergency vehicle blocking truck areas where the trucks gotta go. And the only way they're gonna learn that is together.
Don't misunderstand me, I want the guys to have it. I need you to know if our guys are protected. You are the attorney for us, are our guys protected? What's your read?
With regard to the, for instance, Karnes County says, okay, get out of your city. It depends what arrangement that the city has with Karnes County directly. This is just participation agreement. With regards to, the city's gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars, where do we get it? That is an agreement that was...
That agreement hadn't been wrote yet, is what you're saying.
I do not know if it has or not. This is just an interlocal agreement. But the, for specifics, there should be an interlocal agreement between the city and Karnes County. But, okay, we're participating, but the understanding is, you can't kick us out, because this doesn't address it. This just, it's for everybody.
This just says we're gonna, we agree to...
We agree, interlocal agreement. So a secondary, if I understand what you're saying, we should have a secondary agreement that states the specifics of what we're going to receive for a hundred thousand dollars before we give them a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, because it's going to be, you know, I, and I haven't seen any prior agreements or understanding about the hundred thousand dollars that was intended for the training center. What that's gonna cover, what, for the city, do you have to pay for any of the, you know, something that another agency or a government does not pay? That's in the specific interlocal agreement. With regard to usual provisions on the... The acknowledgement that a hundred thousand dollars is gonna pay, any, you know, termination provisions, any type of, you know, what the, what the county needs to do, what the city has to do. Those are not addressed here, because it's a combination of different agencies. But that agreement should, the city should have one with the county, because, you know, before we give the hundred thousand dollars, it has to be some type of agreement we have to do. So that agreement has to be between the county and the city.
So we need, we need to get that agreement done. This can be approved for the interrelationship.
Yes.
But...
Before the money's handed over.
Before the money's handed over, we want an agreement that specifically says...
That you guys are protected.
That Karnes City can't tell you...
This agreement wouldn't matter then, until after that one.
Well, no, you gotta have, you need the interlocal agreement.
And if we're not gonna be in the center, what would we need an interlocal agreement for? In other words, if y'all say that we're not gonna have an agreement, the hundred dollar on the city. Why would we need an interlocal agreement?
All it says to its contribution is that discretionary.
Right, and that's what I saw earlier, we used the hundred thousand while we were talking about. That's what we put in the budget.
Put in the budget.
Two, two budgets ago. Cause I didn't see that when I read it, so I saw discretionary.
And, and...
So we're not bound for any money, it's just an agreement? There's nothing wrong with the agreement, is what you're telling us?
That's correct. Now, the, when I, when I reviewed the contract, I did, I mentioned that it's general, and you have to have a more specific agreement with the county, because it doesn't address those issues with regard to the money the city's gonna put into it. What you say...
Oh, so this agreement doesn't say we're giving them this amount, it's just saying that we're going into agreement with them.
Going into agreement.
And until we get our other, then we'll know how much and what the specifics are.
Yeah, and it doesn't say that either, but it's just the general agreement that everyone's gonna cooperate to use the facility. And then there's that inspection fee. Now, we have to pay the inspection fee, or maybe our hundred thousand dollars will cover that. So I put in, as applicable, I put in those, those words. So it may or may not be applicable to that. So, so I made it as to if it applies to you or not. So if the city, because we don't know how much the other cities would contribute to this. So, again, there has to be a more specific interlocal agreement to protect the city and to indicate what you get for your hundred thousand dollars.
So then if we're putting a hundred thousand dollars, do we expect them, Rungy and Gillette, and everybody else put a hundred thousand dollars?
We're not, we're not talking about what everybody else gonna do. We wanna know what we're gonna get.
In return.
What we're getting.
And originally, the other hundred thousand dollars was to pay for the building and all the equipment, if you could say, or for the same part. That's the cost of it. That was for the hundred thousand dollars.
I don't, it's not that I don't want them to have it, I want them to have it. I just wanna make sure that they have the best of what they're gonna have, and that's it.
Yeah.
So, but, and I'm always gonna lean on them. So you're saying it's good?
Oh, yes. I was preparing a individual interlocal agreement between the city and the county. When I talked to the county attorney, I, I imagined that she would probably do something like this. They include all, because, so everybody will understand, okay, we're going to share this facility. And so that's the interlocal agreement that the county attorney has prepared. But it doesn't exclude us from, we should have another agreement with regard to, okay, this is our hundred thousand dollars, it's for building and facility, you know? And because of that, we're not gonna be kicked out, or we have a, we have a, we pay our interest into the facility. So we need to know how it's gonna be, you know, you can upkeep it, who's gonna upkeep it, and so there's gonna be some type of maintenance fee that, who's gonna bear that expense? It's gonna be proportioned as to the agencies using it.
Yeah.
There's all those types of questions that only an interlocal agreement will answer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, participation, yes.
Okay.
But what we're gonna get for our money, as the city provisions, that are directly to the city of Kennedy, that has to be in the...
And y'all are working on it?
Yes, I started it, and then the county had this in mind, but I have that saved, so we could use it as an individual.
Right, because they need our check. Until we, until, 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 until they sign off on what we want, we don't have to give them that check. But this doesn't say we're gonna give them anything.
It's got agreement into it.
Yeah, it's very beneficial, but financially, like, losing it, like, that's what we were about. They're gonna benefit more than we would, you know?
And essentially, the volunteer fire department is not a governmental entity that could contract, they could participate.
Right.
So with regard to the interlocal agreement, it's going to be the city of Kennedy, which will include the volunteer fire department, which will include the emergency services and probably the police department as well, to use it.
Is everybody putting in the same amount?
I don't believe that everybody's putting the same amount. And the only reason this amount was kinda, when I had asked for it on the agreement, was actually with the money we get for the rural fires we get in. And the more you make, you know, the more that was coming in and stuff. We, every time we go out and help the other agents and stuff, you know, it's, I was at the city limits. And that's...
I don't have a problem with, I was just wondering. They're all doing the same.
And, I mean, from my understanding, I don't know where that money was going before, but we never actually addressed it where it was used, so...
Yeah, I still don't know.
You know, that's what I'm saying. So that's kinda where we asked for us for that money to come from, was to put it in the budget.
I agree.
So it may not be that much, are we saying too, right? We don't know an amount yet.
What do you mean?
No, it's a hundred thousand.
Well, it's a hundred thousand, because that's kinda what we, old boys take on. And again, when I came in here and asked the council back then, they agreed with that amount.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go into the interlocal agreement with all nine entities listed.
Second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call it off.
Council Breonis?
Yes.
Council Wayne?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes.
Council Connaught?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, real quick, so we're gonna work on the other one to be able to pay the bill.
Give them a loop. Hey, can we get a motion for recess, please?
I'll make a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess. No, no, I, I completely understand.
You got a map out.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, sure. Just sitting here, I'm like, what?
There's a lot going on here.
Yeah. A lot. Yeah, I'll be happy to expand on that.
Oh, I forgot to tell you. Uh, another day at work.
Yeah, you can handle it.
It's nice to be in trouble like that, Brenda.
It is, it is, isn't it?
I was okay, I was okay with that.
Good, I'm glad. I was real okay with it too.
We have a smaller deal at Hollywood Park, by now, they have, right in front of the people. I have been to that location. There's, I'm sorry. I have been to that location, Donella and Hollywood Park. Yeah, and, and there's a little, I guess a little trench, and some people have grass and people have, they, they, they have, they can decide what they want. Grass or these big rocks or whatever. Oh, yeah, yeah. And then there's a driveway that goes, you know, to the, and then there's a pipe underneath the driveway. Sure. So then the, the water flows and there's-
Well, that's the piece that we wouldn't be in clear on. That's why I, I, I keep asking everybody to talk. Remember, you're not talking to someone who, you're talking to the, the mass. So you've got a, it needs to be broken down in a way that you can paint a picture for them, where they can see.
You know, the, the truth is, we're making an improvement and the improvement involves a ditch, and they're not used to the ditch.
Right.
And they, they don't know how that's gonna perform.
But the, the, the problem that they have is there's a ditch where there would normally be a driveway where somebody could normally get across easily, and that piece is not done yet.
There was no ditch and they could get across anything.
Right.
What's up, man?
Oh, we're just talking, rehashing. It's the public comment period that you wouldn't allow. The grass is nice.
You always get the land off. That's why you get the big chin.
Yeah, seventeen cents. When y'all get fourteen cents, I get seventeen. Pretty good.
You got a raise?
Hey, thanks Dave, for pulling them strings for us. For Christmas, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You really came through for us, I'm serious.
Well, y'all seemed to express a need.
We needed it, man, we really did.
Well, hopefully it turns over and happens without a flop and everything goes fine.
Wow, it went really well last year, so I'm super excited for this year.
When is it, the thirteen?
Hello?
That's a good day.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Well, we're on a break right now.
Okay.
Hey, man, what did you tell me that one time about my enemies, my best enemy or what was it? Or my worst enemy? Something like you can't beat and join them, but not all of yours. You don't remember?
Tom Rogers.
You don't remember that conversation?
Keep your friends close, enemies closer?
No.
Not that?
You don't remember? You gotta remember.
All right, so y'all might as well know, Steve's working already.
Steve is?
He's excited about this water supply project.
He used to do, I mean, it doesn't come around every day.
It doesn't.
It doesn't come around a hundred years.
Yeah, it, it's easy to, it's easy to find a mud or something on town.
John, stand up real quick. Turn around, look at the door over there. Dude, they ate all of his, boy, he's got nothing left. Hey, he was like trying to tag you, come in, Dave, come in and help you.
He was doing okay, he was doing okay.
Hey, he was. Hey, but we are gonna go down there, right?
He's gonna go over there tomorrow, yeah.
When are you gonna go?
If I need to, I can.
I really think you should.
Even though they're not finished?
Yes. You saw the gas line, right?
That little yellow pipe?
Yes.
Looked like it needs to get shaved off, doesn't it?
Yeah, somebody go and just cut it just for fun.
The little yellow thing's a gas line?
Yeah.
It's a gas line.
It shouldn't be gas.
If it's, if it's, are they good plastic?
But that tells me some things.
Yeah.
It has been adjusted.
But the picture's still good.
Yeah. It got what it needed, it got the attention it needed. She got results. Hey, but you will go look there.
All right, I'll go. We're going at ten o'clock in the morning. Oh, no, John's gonna be here at ten o'clock in the morning, so I'll go look. Okay.
Hey, Chris, you're going with John?
I will.
Yeah.
I'll meet you dinner at two o'clock.
You know, and another lady said twenty years, it's been eighty.
Well.
And it's gonna be, it's gonna be different.
It's not related, I get it.
There's nothing you can say to make what's happening better.
No, I agree.
It's just, it's an improvement, it's gonna be different.
Right. We need to get it completed and then reassess everything.
Okay, uh, yes, please. Make a motion, can we go back in the session?
I'll second that.
Where, where, yeah, item number-
Twelve.
Okay. Item number twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution nineteen dash twenty eight. Resolution of the city council of the city of Kennedy, Texas, approving the recommendation of the expenditure of funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for advertising, promoting and hosting the Kennedy Music Festival and establishing an effective date. Is there a presentation?
We've been looking at, Lenny, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with the figure of about a hundred, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, God.
And I think at this point, if we intend to have a festival, we need to move forward with this, so it starts with people lined up.
Yeah, I agree.
We've started looking at, um, for example, with the, in case it did go forward, with the restaurant trailers getting better pricing and actually getting from different people, so we can get competitive pricing. Then you, last year was kind of-
We did it last minute.
Yeah, and we just-
Now this year, we know, we know what we're doing, right?
Yeah.
Went better, playing field. It went really well, I think, and you were there last year, and I think it went well. The whole event itself was nice, both days, I think we, we went off without a hitch, I think it was pretty good. Seems like everybody had a really nice time.
I talked to the chief and there were just almost no arrests for any rapists during the entire festival.
Zero violence.
Mm-hmm. So I think it was great. And I know the argument is that, you know, we wanna go back with the chamber. Right now, we don't have that agreement to do that, and maybe I make sure we'll have something in place and we can join them again. Um, but at this time, we don't. We have to spend this money at dates. A great deal, I think we had a great time. Everybody did, you know, we were able to give back to our kids. I think that was a bonus. Um, you know, I really think we should go ahead and go forward so we can get rolling, and, you know, for you that don't wanna help, that's okay. Um, the rest of us will, you know, you count me in, I'll help with what you guys need. Um, I think we should just do it.
This is an-
It was nice.
Can we have a public comment on my end, or?
Yes, we can, Mr. Sossila.
You know, and I, people can say, well, you're talking too much, whatever, we all want the best. I'm, I'm just gonna say real quick, cause I got one more, and then I'm gonna get lost, cause y'all, y'all is more important here. In that regards to that, the celebration, like I said, I just saw her a little bit, but everybody learned from it, first time. It was a great turnout. If it happens again, and however money is spent on it or whatever, that's, that's y'all's decision on that. I, uh, one thing that I just wanted to talk about real quick, on, on any celebrations, any festivities, I don't know, whatever, since the sixties, late sixties, mid sixties, early seventies, I've been here twenty-seven years, people that have been here longer than that lived here all their lives, uh, for instance, our Bluebonnet Festival. I don't know where, when or how, or who, uh, it wasn't the city, it was the citizens that, that had the opportunity or have had the opportunity to, uh, to vote on it, or, or when, if, if, why sometimes, or if it has, uh, or if it's in the future to, to, like I said, or like I'm gonna say, uh, have it celebrated somewhere else. Uh, there's been some times where, uh, it's been downtown, it's been at the park, it's been a, uh, local building where our, where our building is gonna be built, the civic center or whatever, so there was an instance too by Alexander Ford. Uh, there was gonna be a rodeo in addition to, if you wanted to go see a rodeo and take the kids out there or whatever and have a roping, you can see some rodeo whatever events, you can't even see the, you can't even see the, the corrals anymore.
Yeah, it was Al Rodeo.
Yes, ma'am, exactly. And, and, and of course, the city didn't pay for that. That's private, whatever, but it, it was just a deal where you could, my point is, there's a lot of, and we talked about it when these young ladies were here and they spoke earlier about their, their hazards and their, their disability people and stuff. Some folks are fortunate to, to be able to, to move around and get around and travel around, whatever, and some are not. You know, what I'm trying to say is, if you wanna go to Kern City, you wanna go to Runge, you wanna go to Fall City, if you wanna go to Beagle or whatever, some people just can't go over there. I'm gonna ask, nobody has to answer, but, uh, if we can, if we can get with these coordinators and these, uh, people that take care of those festivities, Fall City, Runge, Yorktown, Beagle, uh, Cusco, Chester Hova, Panamaria, can we, can ask them if they can celebrate their festivities here in Kennedy? I'd like to see what kind of answer we would get. If that makes any sense. I just don't see who, who or what, I mean, I just don't see who was, was, was the idea or if it has been the idea of anybody moving our celebrations or any event somewhere else. It, it's just, it just needs to stay here, whatever celebrations we do, it just needs to be here. The kids, uh, I'm not from here, I've been here twenty-seven years, but if, if people that have grown here, uh, there's kids now. Uh, y'all celebrated when y'all were young. It's always been here, just leave it here. There has, there, there shouldn't be no discussions, well, you know, we're gonna do it at the Lonesome Dove Fest. The Lonesome Dove Fest is not gonna come and celebrate their festivities here. They're not. Uh, I just wanted to, you know, just, just, you know, just, just touch on that real quick. Also, and y'all can discuss that or whatever, but I've got one comment on, on the other item, so I'll just stay here and I'll get out of y'all's way.
What dates were y'all thinking about doing this on? Cause it says establishing an effective date as well.
Did we decide on a date? What were you looking at last time? Last, I'm gonna get my calendar. Last year we had did it on the second week of May.
Second weekend of May.
And we didn't wanna, well, we had been brainstorming earlier this year, we didn't wanna take away from Bluebonnet Days being the second weekend of May, so we had talked about doing it the last weekend of April.
So Bluebonnet Days, the chamber is gonna come to the council with the permit, we're looking at March sixth and seventh.
I, I have contacted, I have spoken a little bit with some performers and I asked them about that date, about, um, April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And the performers were available that weekend. I don't, I've asked them, I had to wait until, like, we went to council before we, I gave them a final, I was wanting to be prepared.
Can we get a copy of the report that you came up with?
Oh, what?
For the numbers, for final numbers? Or you just give them the second report? The third one? Do we have a copy of that?
Copy of, right there.
Okay, but we can-
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm, let me just say that I'm not opposed to having celebration, but is there any reason why it has to be back to back? Could it be moved to?
They're doing it like May.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's kind of back to back.
Well, there's just in March now, right? It's March sixth and seventh, right? So it's the beginning of March. If we have ours in May, that gives a whole month, you know, almost two months in between, why couldn't we have it like, you know, May fifteenth or sixteenth, I mean, that weekend, that sixteenth and seventeenth, that's like mid-May.
And I'm sure getting away from Cinco de Mayo, it should be getting cheaper pricing, I would assume, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, what if we did it, you know, mid-May? Um, and then that way, that gives us a little more time now since we're kind of getting into, uh, into January, it gives us enough time, and then you guys that are new on the council can, uh, has any ideas or something, or if I'm gonna change something different, I mean, you know, cause this is, we're all doing this together and maybe some other, you know, some of the things.
I mean, I understand, like I said, I'm not opposed to it, but it just seems March and April may, you know, is not as good a little bit.
Yeah, I would say May too. I would, I would think it gives a time between Bluebonnet Days, so they can have their stuff.
Yeah.
So I would say May.
Um, I'm trying to look at the school's website to see, if you go deep into, oh, I'm not saying that, cause graduation is not following.
I know most college graduations are like that, that ninth and tenth, or that eighth, ninth and tenth, and then that fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth. I think that might be better, because if you-
And you go the following, it gets high school graduations.
Yeah, high school graduations, that makes me good.
And that gives us mid-May, like I said, gives enough time between Bluebonnet Days, so they can have their stuff and, you know, and, I mean, too, like if they, if we decide to have a parade this year, I mean, if they're gonna have one, then, you know, we're not asking those people to come back, you know, so quickly, you know, they have time in between if they're gonna get you cleaned or whatever the case may be, but even if we have one.
Now, one, if, if we go through with this, which I'm fine with it as well, are we gonna set, establish a, like a line item budget saying like, okay, we're not gonna exceed fifty thousand dollars on entertainment, we're not gonna exceed just a, a dollar amount? That way we can make sure we stay on track and we don't exceed that hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year?
Well, we are, we already are working towards not exceeding that amount, like we've been getting pricing for different, for different things.
And so, yeah, and, and I agree, maybe we should do better at, at keeping track of what we're doing and what we're spending and we just, so we don't go over.
Yeah, cause going over, going over, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm with Cindy on the going over. I mean, you guys told us, when we approved it, it was one fifty, and we told you, you told us when we got done, that's what we spent. Now, we're finding out that we're spending, we spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which, you know, it's water under the bridge now, there's nothing we can do about it, but we can't have that happen again. You've gotta do a better job of staying on top of, and that's like saying, you know, I'm gonna, I'm just keep writing these checks and, you know, the banks gonna cover it, but that dog don't hunt. You, the budget is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you cannot spend a hundred and fifty, you can't spend one dollar over a hundred and fifty thousand if you do, somebody else pays for it other than the city.
Well, and, and going alongside that, one other thing that would make me feel so much better about all of this is tracking labor. Tracking the individual workers of the city who are putting up all, putting up the decorations and everything else, because that is, that is one of the biggest concerns that I got, is are they being paid out of hot funds? Is that taxpaying money? Is that overtime? Cause what is this actually occurring? That's the big, I, it was successful. I've never said that it was not successful. But people just have so many questions, how these different things are being paid for. So if we know now, especially when we talk about agenda item, um, as far as the sixteen, the time management system, I don't know if that is, even if that would make it easier for us, to track it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, the country had left, um, for the festival of past May, they wrote down during the time of the festival what hours they worked that went, that went towards the festival.
And, and I, and I think if, we just talk about all the different things we'd like to see, because people are gonna be asking questions, they're gonna do it, and so let's just have it real clean this year and just say, look, this is every line item, this is how much we spent on entertainment, the entertainer is Justin Meyer, he was five hundred dollars, Brenda Connaught was a thousand dollars. We can say, look, this is what we paid for entertainment, this is the fund it's coming out of, um, and et cetera.
And this is learning, you know, we did it the first year, this was all new to us, and we'll get to that.
And by doing that, we actually capitalize on the hot funds.
Right.
And we save money, tax dollars, that we don't have to spend, because if Cindy was working the booth and she got paid ten dollars an hour and that ten dollars an hour that the city normally would pay, the city don't have to pay that, that has to be paid out of hot funds because that's allowable and that's what it's there for. But without doing the budget like he's saying, and without having those line items, you can't capitalize that. But you should capitalize every penny- But you should capitalize every penny of it, because when we start looking at what this new water system is gonna do and having more hotels, we're gonna have more of that money to work with, so we need to be good at it.
Yeah.
We need to be real good at it.
Who spearheaded this event out? Karen for my...
The, 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 uh, the, the special...
Specials committee?
Committee, yeah.
Okay, so who's gonna foresee the aspects and the whole, oversee the whole event?
I did last year, she was, it was, it was the city manager and the secretary that did most of it, and we, the special projects helped, but the majority of the work, it was them.
Is there a way to go around having employees pay for things and then do we have, we don't have credit cards.
And that's something that needs to be...
Who said, and my concern, Mike, is someone...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, go.
How some people came up to me and said that, there's a coworker of mine, he had a booth, and he told me that not sure he was being told that he was gonna be the only one selling this item and this item. So, when it came down to it, he found out there was more than one person selling what he was selling, and his profits didn't come out the way he thought they were gonna be, because he was told something different, and ended up being that he made more during Bluebonnet Days than he did the Mayo Fest.
We, we tried, you know, we never told, we never told anybody that we were just gonna have one person selling
Yeah, that's good.
one item, because it would...
We got, and, and, and we wanna have, we wanna have it where the people can, we, we wanna have it where people can get the food, because you just have one person and they can't handle the line, that, you know, you...
I don't, I don't know who told him what, who told him that, but, and another thing was, he said that he was issuing a spot number, then when he went to go set up, that someone else was already there, and whoever was telling him to go set up said, just go set up over there, so, I don't know what, if we don't have accountability for the spots and he's put in a bad spot, that could affect the sales as well, so...
We would have just kind of more, and this is the biggest thing, if we can have more volunteers to help us and somebody can say, I'm gonna be in charge of the food vendors, this is what I'm doing, because, you know, putting it all on them was hard, and we try to step in and help too with, with getting everything organized, and, you know, it's a lot of work, but if we had a lot of people up here helping us and say, hey, you know what, we'll help with this part, and we'll, that's great, and that makes everything run even smoother, so yes, that's true, yes, you know, there was some glitches here and there, but if we got some of you guys coming up and helping us, we get rid of some of those glitches.
And we also do have more experience from last year, and as far as the food vendors, from me speaking to the food vendors after the event, they all sold out of food, so, uh, I'm not sure why he, he, you're the person who's speaking about food that way. It could, they all...
We, we all learned from, from the first, from the first, all I was saying, and nobody should say that y'all are against, uh, having those festivities, nobody should say that. I think y'all, everybody who ever was involved, I mean, I'm just saying as far as my, myself, my family that was there, or whatever, it was, it was, it was a very nice event. And, you know, we don't have to spend eighty thousand dollars on Joe Lopez or whatever, whatever, I'm just saying. I've done stuff like this, I'm not, I've never been in a council, but I've done stuff like this, I've ran the nightclub, I've, I've paid bands, I've, I've contracted bands. We can have a DJ, we have a good DJ over there, you can pay him three thousand dollars, I'm just saying, there's, 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 y'all are learning, you know, y'all are gonna learn. Nobody should say, nobody should say the dollar against the, 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 I mean, that's not, that's not what I'm here to... I'm just saying we should not move any events, or nobody should have anything to say, uh, as far as, well, let's have our Bluebonnet Day in, in Yorktown. Let's have it over there, we've, that's, that's just, that's just us all on the same, we should just have our festivities here, wherever they are, May Fest, July Fest, the...
I think the biggest thing is, we wanted a variety of music, I think that's where, you know, we, and maybe we did go a little over the mid, maybe, you know, we're gonna kind of look at that this year real closely and figure out with, that, we, I think we were trying to get a variety of music, some countries, some, some, uh, we kinda had a, uh, they were what, the seventies, eighties music or whatever out there, so we're trying to have a variety, I think that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, so I think anybody do that, again, so kind of look at these a little bit.
And that's all fine.
It was good.
I'm not against it, I'm telling you, I'm not against it. I'm not comfortable doing back-to-back, but what's more important to me is they shouldn't have to wait seven months later to get an accurate counting of what was spent. You should have been here the next month, here, 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 and we have to have it detailed, we need to know, the taxpayers deserve to know where their money is going. We shouldn't have to wait seven months later.
I think they're gonna work on getting that better, right?
Again, that's not, I, I ju- I want everybody to understand, that's not tax dollars. That is not tax dollars. That's money that we collect by having hotels and motels.
It's your tip off.
So, that money, those, those people that come from out of town and stay in those hotels, if we, I don't stay in no hotel.
What were the, what were the demographics of that? Those hotels with the people here, were they senior citizens, were they thirties or forties, forties, fifties, teenagers, twenties? Or were these, cause the motel rooms at that time were already booked up as it was with oil fields, so do we have an accurate account of who came actually and stayed at these motels, or?
No.
Did these people come from out of town and actually stay for the event? Did they go back home? People from Beagle, people from Perez?
I know whenever the Monaias people said, we need a hotel, I had to call at least four hotels to try to get them somewhere, cause they said that they were all booked. And on the weekends, the oil field really doesn't stay in Kennedy, they usually go back home, so they would have those rooms available.
And another concern was that the person, this was a person that worked the booth and had people tell me they should be, that they didn't feel that this was a family setting, but yet, we're in Kennedy trying to make events more for family-oriented. So, they felt that this was nothing but a bunch of people, and I'm just saying what these other people are saying, that there was a lot of drinking going on, and a lot of people, and this came from people that worked the booths, that they were urinating behind the booths, can we get more accountability, catch these people that are doing that? I mean, we don't like, we...
I haven't heard anything about that, and we had a lot of police on the block.
And behind buildings, I mean, I don't know how they would get away with that, but these, some of these vendors were saying that, and I would hate for some little kid, heaven forbid, walks around one of those vans and sees that, and...
Well, I mean, I was there all night, I didn't see anything like that.
That's the, that's the part that bothers me on stuff like that. If somebody's, if somebody's saying that, and they didn't take the time to tell one of those police officers, that's, 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 that's not, that's, yeah, they're more guilty.
Yeah.
Because they had an opportunity to keep from happening a second time.
I, I never, I never would give any kind of report of like that, or... And like I said, I let the vendors know as well, if they see anything that isn't appropriate, to please let an officer, the chief, or we, or whoever's working, we had a...
But if you think of, by the time you find an officer, that person will be long gone, how you gonna... A lot of the time, they're grouped up, that's another thing, that we need those, if we're gonna have officers there, they need to be spread, they need to spread out.
Something's gonna get better, there's like, something's gonna get better.
Oh, we can lay that information to the chief.
Is there a motion or anything?
I have a motion, and we go ahead and set a date for our, uh, Kennedy Music Festival. Um, I think we kind of all agree, maybe, uh, May fifteenth, and I think that was Friday and Saturday, we had fifteen and sixteenth. Um, and, and keep in mind to keep real close into our budget, uh, making sure that we're keeping accountable for everything, um, so I think we're just gonna go ahead and do it on May fifteenth and sixteenth.
But the budget not to exceed?
Not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that? What, we, we find out what's...
The only thing I wanna say is, I'm not, like I said, I'm not against it, I think it's a great idea, I'd like to see them spread out more, something to look forward to after you do this one, and that would be my only concern.
So, please, the only committee with us is help us set everything up and set up the plans, you know, cause it's hard if it's just a few people, and if we had more minds in it, then we can look at the map and say, hey, let's put this here, my idea, because like I said, the more people involved, the easier it is for all to distribute everything.
No, I meant like months, like, that's, I mean, and maybe next year it can be different, I don't know.
I just feel like... Last month, but I want to. So, let's give it a proof so we...
I just feel like March and May is just, it's too close, but that, that would be my only concern.
March, April, May, yeah.
Yeah.
Not far.
And that's a good time to have it, you know, March, you've got spring break going on, and then May, you know, you got kids getting ready to get out of school, they're excited, and then that, then, you know, and then you got vacation time, so people traveling and lots of...
So, would this event acquire beer, uh, beer and all that too?
Of course.
Okay, would you go without, without the beer, make it more fam- family-oriented, if that's what a lot of these people, or leave it up to the people to vote on what they want? Is that a possibility?
Well, they vote on what they want by going to the beer booth.
There's laws, I mean, the, the laws take care of that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's your... And I guarantee you, those children that may see somebody drinking, they done saw mom and dad take a drink. I've lived here since two thousand and three, so I can tell you, you know, we, we, we party a little bit.
Is there any other discussion?
I, can I say one more thing? I will say that we do have vendors already called, have been calling us for the past month and a half, asking us if we have set a date. They were calling today, and all we told them is, well, we have the next meeting, and after the next meeting, so it's okay, well, we'll talk tomorrow, so, you do have people...
I'll second that motion.
So it's gonna be fifteen and sixteen?
Yes.
And... Is there any other discussion?
I, I do, I do have a little bit more, or a little bit of something else to say. Will you look at that weekend and see, I mean, I briefly looked to see if there is anything else surrounding here? Okay. And if there is, just come back and...
So we can pick a time?
Yes.
And then, um, can, when you establish at least a tentative budget, can you at least just bring it to us? I mean, as you start setting, you know, um...
Approving people to come.
Approving people to come, that way we can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at and everything. I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Just say yes.
Look, when it exists like a month before, that consumes my life.
Is there any other discussion on this item? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Councilor Greenis?
Yes.
Councilor Wood?
Yes.
Councilor Sides?
No.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action, consider resolution nineteen twenty-nine, a resolution approving bid quote from Spectre Scoreboards in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars for the Larry Keeson Youth Sports Complex, paid by Kennedy Four B Corporation budgeted funds.
I would request that this be a no-action item, mayor.
Okay.
The, uh, the original bids were not done through the proper seed bid process, and they're gonna have to go after the seed bid, and then that bid will have to come out, come out later.
With, with all due respect, this doesn't require so many, it went to the board and we discussed it with Dan last night.
So, did you hear that?
Okay. Yes. And, uh...
That information never got to me.
My apologies, but you are supposed to be at those meetings, by the way, Four B.
I was told I didn't have to be at Four B.
You know, certain ones, you know, Four B is one you're supposed to be, according to our ordinance.
We can get those.
Yeah, but, uh, we did discuss that with Dan last night. And if we need to email him, we can email him, but...
That is, that's, that's your representation here. That's where we go, we go, move forward.
But the other two won't put on here because of the reasons that you had.
Okay. And I'll make a motion that we consider item thirteen on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Is there really anything else?
There's really...
But these are the four options we have. Mr. M...
You guys didn't really move on, but, uh, these are the different four words that are gonna go on the different fields, so it's not really an option to pick one, these are the actual scoreboards across all the fields, or five fields.
These are what that's gonna be?
Yeah, this is what they will look like.
Wow.
Very nice, y'all look.
That wasn't budging correct?
And, and, uh, Mr. Casado...
Very nice.
Okay. Yes, sir. The, uh, the Four B meeting, I've never been in one, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, Four B, I haven't seen that.
Uh, and, uh, it's, it's, it's good to know as far as what, at first people were optimistic, and we didn't know, and everybody was, uh, you know. But I just wanna make a comment, uh, as far as Mr. Keesley is concerned, and his, uh, his members. They've done a heck of a job for the citizens, for the cities, athletic-wise, for the kids, which is most important. Uh, great job, that's all I wanna say, as far as Mr. Keesley and his, his folks. It's gonna be nice, the park's gonna be nice, it's, it's, like I said, it's, it's, we need to go forward, not back. Thank you, guys, for letting me, uh, talk a lot. Thank you, Merry Christmas, Joe. Thank, uh, is there any other discussion on it?
Questions, comments, concerns?
So those little scoreboards will be back there until?
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number thirteen.
And I'll stick with that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Councilor Greenis?
Yes.
Councilor Wood?
Yes.
Councilor Sides?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number fourteen has already, uh, we've already gone through that.
Yeah.
Item number fifteen, status update on substrate, substandard structure at one sixty Graham Road, Kennedy, Texas. I, I asked for this to be on here because we started something with Megan, uh, around a year ago, when Martin Cantu was, uh, hired here, that was one of the first things that he worked on. And we, we came to a point where some other things were gonna need to be done by, uh, the attorneys. And all of a sudden, it just stopped, so I'm trying to figure out where does that happen?
I, um, reviewed the file and, uh, February twelfth, maybe, twenty nineteen, uh, there was a motion in public, in the public, uh, uh, part of the, uh, of the, uh, city council, maybe, to, uh, de the structure in violation of the ordinance and dangerous building. Uh, apparently, uh, Mr. Cantu, there's a, uh, to come back in thirty days with the plan for removal or uh, repair of the facility. Uh, there was a report done enable, on April the fifth, uh, regarding the attempts to contact Mr. Cantu, and first he was amenable to, I think, repair it and get it up for sale. Uh, the last entry again is on April the fifth, uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, uh, this money was gonna go check to see if, um, I'm sorry, uh, there was a, Mr. Cantu was gonna, uh, check to see if someone from the municipality, uh, was in fact, uh, retained to sell it. That's the last thing that I could find. Uh, with regard to what to do next, uh, although the council, it was anticipated, I guess, that other action would be, I guess, would, would, uh, happen because after thirty days, there was a report done to the council. Now, the, although the council found that the building was to be a, was a dangerous structure, there was no order to, uh, Mr. Vernon on what he had to do. Typically, the city will, will state, okay, you, you're, there is a finding that your, your house is a dangerous structure. Therefore, the council orders you to fix it in thirty days, or, uh, tear it down in thirty days, or do something in thirty days. Uh, so, that, that order, uh, was not, was not done. Now, uh, so, the, uh, council has discretion thirty, but not more than ninety days to repair it, not get it down, or whatever. Uh, once that order is not, uh, followed by the homeowner, the property owner, then the council can go ahead and, uh, order the occupants to be vacated, uh, and demolish the building. Uh, or there's a other option that's relocate the occupants, which is fairly standard with regard to these type of, uh, issues, when you have to demolish the building. You assist in relocation, you don't have to put them up somewhere, you know, on the city line, you assist, I think there was a, a, uh, a, uh, idea to go ahead and try to get some section in housing.
Yeah, the city has five different places.
Actually, I thought they did that.
We, we, we did go pretty far with that.
Okay, so, uh, now, my question is, is, uh, Mr. Vernon still living in the house or not? Do we know that?
As he is.
I don't know. I heard he was in the dock. Back to that.
He's there.
He has a dog, that's why he left on time.
Then, the, uh, the city in the next, uh, I guess, next meeting... Then, the, uh, the city in the next, uh, I guess, next meeting, has this around the agenda to, uh, to order, uh, Mr. Vernon from his property, give him how many, you know, since there was a finding that it was dangerous, give him maximum of days to, uh, present to the ordinance to demolish, uh, repair, or, or remove whatever is, uh, that is considered dangerous, what my understanding is.
Yeah.
Uh, but that usually will give him a time period to relocate or. The city do a system to relocate to section downtown, section eight housing. But then after that time, then the city can demolish the structure, then put a lien on the property for payment. So right now, it's, uh, the, the city, I think, in good faith, has attempted to work with, uh, Mr. Vernon and, uh, and, uh, suggesting different alternatives for him to, uh, explore with regard to other housing. And right now, it, you know, he hasn't done anything so far, he hasn't been ordered to, but after the order given thirty days or whatever my days say wants to give him, uh, after that time, then there's requisites where you have to publish in the newspaper what happened at the meeting, uh, you know, the, the results, uh, a copy of the order that the city has, uh, has submitted and filed with the sec- city secretary, and then, uh, if those, after the thirty days or forty-five days or whatever has, uh, expired, then, uh, the city goes ahead and can demolish the building.
Had he left it all from the house, do you know?
He, what I was told is he left for a short time, and then his dog went back.
Well, where he was supposed to go, the dog was gonna be allowed to be there. Cause he was supposed to go to public houses, not to a hotel.
Yeah, public, public house, I'm not sure. And it, these are the concerns that I get from people that actually live around him, okay? Not only are people worried about the danger for others, it seems to me the most important thing and what people are concerned or for is well-being.
Yeah.
Because it's getting colder, I'm getting more and more calls on it. Uh, and I understand the city's position, we don't have any liability if that thing was to catch on fire, but that's not what the neighbors are concerned with. Yes, some of them are, but more importantly, people that weren't, they're worried about his welfare. So whatever we're supposed to do for humanitarian aid, let's do it.
And during the time, again, as we put on the agenda, uh, during the time that, uh, before the next council meeting or during the, how many days the council wants to give him to, uh, present to the ordinance to try to repair or remove the structure. So you can still communicate with them, try to get them housing, but sometimes assistance is really important for this.
We just need somebody in there to talk to, send a psych doctor or something, cause it is, it's falling down around us here.
Thank you for the, for the update.
Yeah.
Do you guys have anything else on the update?
I just, I, I, I just thought.
Yes, if you'd like action, yes.
I, I just thought we had already got him into public housing because that was what we originally said and had lined up.
He's got an order from the council for him to.
So then. So then staff direction to create an order and on the next city council agenda?
Yeah. And then you can still approach him and try to, you know, help him go somewhere else. Or have some type of, uh, uh, agency assistance city that, uh, you know, houses people such as, uh, Mr.
Any movement?
That's all we can do.
That's all we can do, the way it's worded, it's just staff direction.
Okay, what would you like for that to be?
What I, that's what I just said, is just staff direction to put, uh, at the next city council meeting, uh, put an agenda item for the order, or.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would need a motion.
A second and a vote to do that.
Hey, who jumped in this and trying to find this?
Kennedy housing authority.
Yeah, Kennedy housing. The city can, can assist, but they could also have other agencies.
Is that the city's secretary or?
Motion.
So do we make a motion now, or do we have to wait till we have?
If you wanna give him, if you wanna give him direction, you need to give him a motion.
Okay.
Because you have to make, what if somebody else doesn't wanna do that? Somebody wants to do something else?
Usually when we do staff direction, we don't make a motion.
Usually you do staff direction in, in executive session, I, I mean, it's real simple, nobody wants to do it, we have a motion and a second.
The way it's written, it's a status, the status update.
Okay.
So there's no action to be taken, but direction to, to.
Which I did.
Okay, you're going in circles here, though, but anyway, I, I'll deal with that.
Okay.
There, there isn't, but there's no action, but there is action, okay, I mean, that is an action.
Well, that, that's a status update on it.
Gotcha.
Generally on a no-action item, uh, it's not a, a, a motion and action item, just gives that direction to you.
Okay, so if I give him a direction, is that okay? Because I'm not the entire body.
Typically, when we do these types of, typically, when we do these type of agenda items, we specifically say staff direction and don't make a voting motion.
Our problem is we make up things as we go along.
We don't, we'll never have, we'll always have staff's direction never taken.
Consideration of possible action in regard to time management system for city employees.
Make a motion to consider item sixteen on the agenda?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
You have the time, Matt, did y'all, we do, talked to two different companies, uh, contract is one, and it is primarily web-based, almost entirely, uh, they can put in, uh, biometric reader for certain locations in the city. They are cheaper, but I'm not sure we're apples to apples. Uh, Time Clock Plus, which is the same system that county uses, would put in, uh, a biotouch system primarily for our, um, everyday workers other than the police, uh, the remainder of the police would be on a web-based thing. That comes to about eighty-two hundred and twenty, let's say eighty-two thousand, eighty-two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents for a year. The ongoing licensing fee after that would be twenty-eight eighty a year, um, and the maintenance would be another eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year. So, uh, ongoing annual fee would be around that, thirty-seven hundred dollars.
What, we budget?
We budgeted twenty thousand. So either, the other system would be about six thousand dollars a year, but again, I'm not sure that they understood how the staff would turn around what it is. And Time Clock Plus, Time Clock Plus is a very good system. It's a very good system, it's the system the county uses and.
The school.
People, they're, some of the issues are there.
My only question is, do you feel like it's necessary for us to do the full biometric system, or do you think just the web-based system through Time Clock Plus?
Doing the web-based system will save us about forty-five hundred dollars off of the eighty-two hundred. And I think that the only problem with doing the web-based is I'm not sure all of our employees have access to smartphones.
Yeah.
So they can, so they can utilize that service. Uh, I think we've got a certain number of employees, particularly in the street and water department, who never go to work unless they go to the shop and go out, unless, and some of them are, I'm calling them wickets, but through the system, it's relatively easy for a supervisor to repair that and, and put their time in appropriately. And if they have smartphones, then they can use the smartphones. We, I mean, we can go and try it without the biometrics and just use the smartphone system and see if that's working for us, but the supervisor would have to make up any difference for those who don't have no access to.
But if it doesn't work, then you have to add it.
That would, that would defeat the whole reason, that would defeat the whole reason for doing it, because we were, the supervisors are trying to keep the time now. What we're doing now. Yeah, so, I think we need to have it. And I think, I think, and this would have two of the biometric readers, we'd have, and we'd decide where to put those, but we would go with the shop down here where the hell we'll, and we put the other one at city hall for employees here, that's where you want to put it.
Now, is it?
And anybody could clock in here or there.
I guess my question is, is it a better idea to do the biometric system or have a central computer there at the shop and a central computer here at the office? Whereas.
I think the biometrics would function quicker.
Quicker.
People timed in, uh, and timed out, clocked in and clocked out. Uh, if, you know, if all of us had to wait our turn at a computer, as opposed to just swiping a finger or doing. I think we can get people in and out quicker through a biometric system than we could waiting on a central computer.
Yep.
Now, we don't have to do both biometric, we can do one there and a lot, because everybody here in this building has their own computer. So when they come in, they could just clock in through the computer.
The same across the board, everybody does it the same, cause I mean, what if they have to go to?
Well, they don't ever go there before they check in here.
I would say do it all the same.
Y'all's pleasure. But we're looking at, uh, eighty-two, twenty-seven, forty-nine for an initial cost, and then roughly thirty-seven hundred dollars a year after that for maintenance and licensing.
So if employees come, go ahead, oh, sorry, so if employee's coming to work and, uh, incident happens, he stops and he's taking care of it, we can automatically, as a city, uh, go in and fix his time?
Yeah.
Supervisor.
Or, or if he has a smartphone, he can clock in from there, he clocks in right where he's at, which is the way we have our police clock.
And you'll be able to see where they clock in at.
You can see it's geobased, so you can see where they clock in, what time they clocked in, and we can make sure that meshes with the incident that they caused.
Maybe it's just me trying to save money, but I, I feel like every, and you said it yourself, every employee in this building has a computer.
Right.
So the, each employee can clock in as soon as they come individually, cause they have their own computer. I understand now what you're saying about at the shop, about having biometric system and trying to get people to go through, not probably, everybody has a smartphone, they don't have, each have computers or iPads.
What do we save, for, to have one less?
Probably about two thousand dollars.
Uh, um, about twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred dollars. I, I, I think it's worthwhile to have it, just like Brendan said, well, and the same thing where, you know, if somebody come in, the computers are down, and they can't clock in, they, they gotta, but if they've got the system now, they clock in and go on and do what they're gonna do. Uh, you know, it's just.
I just don't think it's necessary, and I think.
It's not.
I, I, because for realistically, let, let's just talk about myself, I get to work every single day, turn on my computer, clock in immediately, and that's how all of us do. We don't even have the biometric system. They, because road and bridge all have, each individual employee has an iPad where they do all the reporting and everything else. So with the, um, the street department and everything else that go to the shop, I can understand, it, it, it does take about thirty seconds, by the time you put in your PIN, and then you put in your password, and then it has to process through. So I can see where you can't get them in quick enough, so if you're scanning your finger, I, or however it worked, I can see that. But the first thing every employee, I would assume, when they first get in the morning, they're gonna go to their desk, they're gonna set their stuff down. I don't see why you can't just clock in and just save twenty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I hear you.
You can't share my finger, though, either.
Well, I hear you, but that's not gonna happen.
I can get your.
They're gonna walk in.
Password, your, and all that good stuff, and I can log in for you.
I mean, we hope that everybody do that, but.
Yeah, that, that happens, but the other thing that happens is they walk in, somebody asks them a question, and before they can clock in, they're trying to answer that question, and twenty minutes later, they realize, I didn't clock in. Now they gotta clock in, and somebody gotta go back and fix that time.
Well, I, I can tell you, my supervisor tells me, if you do not clock in and you do not clock out correctly, your time does not count for the day.
That's right.
Yeah, but that's.
He loses it.
Nope.
That's his least, you can't, they, they, they can't do that.
It's my responsibility to clock in.
But you, you still, you still got to, you, you still got, you still can't not pay them cause they didn't clock in.
Just do it, that's it. I just like it be universal all the way across the board.
Whatever y'all want. I, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, do Time Clock Plus, and we do the two biometric, uh, readers, uh, the eighty-two hundred dollar program for the city employees, Kennedy.
And I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Councilor Bionis?
Nay.
Councilor Wood?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
No.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
No.
Motion dies.
I'll make a motion that we continue through with Time Clock Plus with one biometric system being placed out at the shop.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
That's just, that's just at the shop?
One, one system versus two systems, so there would be one, one biometric system at the shop, and then all the other employees, like police department, city staff who have computers here at city hall, could use that system.
You know, I got accused of, uh, buying different Christmas gifts for different departments. It was a real big deal, you know, fortunately, the ladies got Bath and Body Works, and I was accused of showing special privilege to one department. I don't know how this is any different, I really truly don't.
It's access, so they don't have access to computers, or I would have made a motion that we just go web-based.
I think we should just have it the same across the board, we want everybody to be accountable and be honest, not that, nobody's not honest up, up, up here, I'm not saying that, but I think it's just to be the same across the board, everybody clocks in the same, it is your thumbprint, it is your face to take a picture of, there's no question that was you that clocked in, plain and simple, there's not ever a question, well, how did you clock in? Well, I looked so and so wrong, my password to clock in, cause I was just running like, I, I was busy over here and I, no, we're not gonna have all that, it'll be.
Well, it will, it will tell you, it will tell you the computer that it was done on. So if I ask Amanda to clock me in, and here's my password, here's my PIN, it's gonna have the URL, the IP address saying she clocked in with my password on her computer, it's the same.
I would say, oh, I, I did it on her computer, cause I got on her computer, cause it was closer.
No, but then she.
How do you know that? What I'm saying is, how do you know that?
Well, the police department is gonna have to do the web-based.
Did you get a second?
I, I got a sec, a second.
I just think it should be universal across the board.
But it wouldn't be universal, because the police department doesn't do it. So if you're trying to say it's favoritism, it's not, it's just what works in using the funds. We don't have to have the most, we don't need to do biometric across the board and say, oh, but not police department, and then go in and say, well, if we only do one biometric system versus two, we're showing favoritism, cause it's not favoritism, because they don't have computer access at that shop, that's the point I'm saying, that's the only reason I'm making the motion the way I am, is because they don't have, not every single one of them will have a smartphone, and it's not their responsibility to clock in on a non-city smartphone. So it's, it, so if you have the biometric there, you're serving that purpose, everyone else then will use web-based, because like I said, it tracks by the IP address and.
Can I take this, uh, item, executive?
Yeah, really.
Yes, if somebody will give us a motion.
Make a motion to go to executive session?
I'll second that.
Call a roll.
Councilor Bionis?
Yes.
Councilor Wood?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
This time we're going into executive session.
Are you kidding me?
Yes, no, I'm not, I was, uh.
Okay, smile, everyone.
Item number sixteen, consideration of possible action in regard to time management system for city employees, any movement?
Item number sixteen, consideration of possible action in regard to time management system for city employees, any movement?
I think I need to go ahead and remove my motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, does somebody want to?
I second that.
Okay. Um, then I'll make a motion that we do, or I make a motion for Time Clock Plus with the two biometro, biometric, Time Clock systems that all city staff must use, including salaried employees, with the exception of the city police department peace officers, um, that are also sworn in by the city.
Second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Councilor Bionis?
Yes.
Councilor Ed?
Yes.
Councilor Fine?
Yes.
Councilor Klein?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number seventeen, consideration of possible action in regard to review of city attorney bills. Hey, Adolfo, I just want the bills. Legislature should see the bills every meeting. I don't wanna sit here for another third or four minutes, I don't know what we have to do, but we gotta see the bills.
The, the bills can be available to the, uh, city council members through the city manager's office, and, uh, and they won't be redacted, they're just the whole bills, and you can see what the, the bill is.
Okay. Now, you say we have to go to the city manager's office to get those?
City hall. Yeah, city hall, wherever they're, yeah.
Okay. That's all I needed. Does everybody know how to get the bills though?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I don't have an announcement, not today.
Well, what the hell, that's why I stay here.
You wanna make that move right quick?
No, I don't wanna, I wanna pass on that, if y'all are okay with that. Item number nineteen, city manager report.
Friday night, Christmas in Kennedy.
Yes.
We'd like everybody to be here, it's gonna be a good deal, we've got a major moving forward, uh, I think it's gonna be an exciting evening.
This coming Friday?
This coming Friday, the thirteenth. Five o'clock, we'll be done at nine, streets will be open again before midnight.
Okay.
Um, we've got everybody accounted for, Ice Skate Marie's gonna be here, I'd love to see all the ice skates, we will take photos.
Let's be the mayor.
We did, we were able to get a third horse and carriage in last year, with just two, it was kind of, you know, backed up, so we were able to get a, a third horse and carriage, we were super excited because, and then, uh, actually, uh, David, um, gave us a little money, and we were super excited and very, very thankful to you guys.
Thank you, David.
Helping us out, it was greatly, greatly appreciated. Um, we did have a train now too, so another little thing for the kids to do, uh, the ice skating rink is gonna be bigger.
Uh, music lineup, this year?
Oh, yes, actually we do, we have, uh, a singer out of Goliad that's coming out to sing, uh, the rung band is gonna play.
Gift of Eden, I was gonna be there.
Who?
Gift of Eden, Matt DeRommelo and Ray.
Yes, they're gonna be there, uh, we couldn't get the Kennedy band, cause they have, uh, an event the same day, so they couldn't make it, um, but we did get the rung band, and like I said, we got, um, her last name is Cross, Vicky Cross, she's out of Goliad, amazing singer, she's coming to sing, she was gonna start us off, uh, we're super excited, anybody wants to volunteer, please find me that day and I will put you somewhere, please.
Yeah, we, we, on the street department side, we already got our volunteers in.
Okay, perfect, good deal, and we, we're gonna start setting up at two o'clock, if anybody can come help us.
We got ten, ten guys coming too, for the party.
Yes. Yay, thank you. Um, we're gonna set up all our, our signs and all our, everything, the Santa station, so please, we need some men to come help us set those up, they're heavy for us ladies to do it.
Friday?
Uh, Friday, we're gonna start setting up at two o'clock, if you guys can come out and help us, you know, I completely work on promise, I can, I can.
Trying to have some, we have a lot of.
We'll have the snow and everything again this year, so.
Trash pickup, we've hit a few hiccups with that, we're working with, uh, citywide officials to get this one, that solved a problem, problem resolved for Mondays and Thursdays, we're going to spend.
Mine was already Mondays and Thursdays, I didn't even know that there was anything different.
I didn't either.
Um, employee of the month, Bobby Olveris.
All right.
Bobby's been on the job a lot, and we're a proud citizen, so, he deserves it, he's working hard, he's doing this thing.
Did he get a gift card?
Yes.
We'll give it tomorrow.
We'll give it tomorrow, yeah.
You want me to stick to him?
Yeah, I'll stick to him, I'll see him in the morning.
I'll hold it.
I'll see you.
One more thing, Christina Benavides is on our committee for our special parties committee, she just lost her mom, she won't be there Friday, but please keep her inspired as they go through this time, okay?
Will.
No, I'm sorry, sorry.
The, the only other thing after the employee of the month, just to let y'all know, if you look at your water report, it's saying that we're losing a lot of water, uh, and it's all going through the leaks, and we are repairing and replacing pipes as fast as we can do it, uh, and we will continue to do that, but when we, and when you hear from your constituents that we're having pressure problems, generally that's the issue, is we're trying to fix a leak somewhere in your neighborhood, and, uh, we're trying to do it without shutting the leak off for a long period of time, and we can't, the guys are working really hard, so we're gonna make things happen, and it's, like I said, this year's a cast iron pipe, it finally says, we're done.
And we are going to be repicking those.
And we're replacing cast iron pipes as fast as we can do it around.
Like, it was, I think, we need to re-line this leak on Monday, like, you want no more?
Yeah, and it's, it's. You know, it, on Fifth Street the other day, you'll, you'll notice that we've replaced a bunch of pipe on Fifth Street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they dug a cast iron pipe on Fifth Street that had seven patches in a row, all of them touching each other.
That's sad.
And that's, that's what was done years ago.
Yep.
And so, when we're finding stuff like that, we're jerking it out in the ground and putting new pipe up there, but it's gonna take a while to get it done.
If I could add to that, I, I do, don't be, don't misunderstand, but when you ask, is it gonna be done, and are we gonna do it right away? You're talking eight to ten years to do that. So, it is, but I don't want you to think it's the next week or next month, it is gonna take eight to ten years to change all these pipes. We're up to what, twenty thousand feet?
Something like that, and, and right now.
In a year and a half.
Primarily emergency stuff that, where it absolutely has to be replaced, can't be touched yet.
And Fifth Street's still terrible.
Well, and we're looking at a, a way to replace Fifth Street all the way down.
Is D-Wind and Maytag an emergency or not?
They're close.
It's getting ready to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. D-Wind and Maytag, we chose to have a couple of people look at that, to tell us whatever cost, have them come in and do it, without saying it's an emergency, uh, because we wanted to get a bid without that, oh my God, it's a brush job. And once we get that, they will go back and say, oh, why don't you go ahead and do that tomorrow?
They take down, Billy.
Yeah, that was a pound of risk, and that pipe is twelve feet in the ground.
Oh.
To work, so, we're gonna, we're gonna actually probably rewrap that pipe, uh, in a shallow, uh, I mean, uh, and just abandon. That's what we're fixing, makes us crazy, we just need to know where it's at, but all accounts.
Hey, you're talking about it costing, right, around twelve feet?
Yep.
What did you do, chief?
I didn't do it, it goes straight up.
You didn't?
Get a patch on.
You're responsible for that.
Turn it on, and it quit.
No, I ran off question, I'm not sure if it's today, but the.
It was off just thirty minutes ago, it was off again.
That's what I'm saying, it came back on and then.
They're still working.
Yeah. That's nonstop.
That's all I have. Oh, one other thing, uh, you should have candidate.